City Council Meeting. Carla, could you please call the roll?
Mm-hmm. Udaly?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Wheeler? Saltzman?
Here. Okay, Madam Attorney, would you please give the statement?
Thank you. Welcome to the Portland City Council. The City Council represents all Portlanders and meets to do the city's business. The Presiding Officer preserves order and decorum during City Council meetings so that everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. To participate in Council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the Council Clerk's Office for communications to speak briefly about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address, however, is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The Presiding Officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless it's otherwise stated. When you have 30 seconds left, a yellow light goes on, and when your time is done, a red light goes on. If you are in the audience and would like to show your support for something that is said, please feel free to do a thumbs up, and if you want to express that you do not support something, please feel free to do a thumbs down. Disruptive conduct such as shouting or interrupting testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. Thank you for helping your fellow Portlanders feel welcome, respected, comfortable, and safe.
Very good. Thank you, and I apologize for my tardiness. I got a call at the last minute from Cheryka Fori, and there was an issue that she and I very much wanted to discuss, and so I appreciate Commissioner Saltzman taking the lead here for the first few minutes. Just a couple of housekeeping items. First of all, you'll notice this morning we have an incredibly packed agenda. As publicly noticed on the Tuesday memo, to best allow for full public testimony and in consideration of our time constraints today, the following items are going to be rescheduled. Item 1261 will be tentatively rescheduled from this morning's 9:45 a.m. time certain to January 16, 2019, at 10:25 a.m. time certain. Again, that's item 1261. Item 1290 will be continued from this morning's regular agenda to January 9, 2019, at the 9:30 a.m. regular agenda. Item 1298 is going to be rescheduled from the Thursday afternoon regular agenda to January 16, 2019, at 9:30 a.m., again, as part of the regular agenda. And item number 1299 is going to be rescheduled from tomorrow afternoon's regular agenda to this morning's regular agenda to be paired with item 1285, and that's to accept a firm fixed price of $73.5 million from James W. Fowler, Company for the Design and Construction of the Willamette River Crossing Project. Finally, just due to the significant number of items on this morning's schedule, the fact that we also have an afternoon session scheduled and we can't run them into each other, we're going to limit public testimony today to two minutes. With that, communications, communication slots get their regular three minutes. Good morning, Carla.
Good morning. Item 1256, request of Star Stoffer to address Council regarding the monopoly of Portland.
Next individual, please.
1257, request of Andrea Firpo to address Council regarding the Southwest Capitol Highway Expansion Project.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Andrea Firpo. I live in a home on the corner of Southwest Capitol Highway and Southwest Alice Street, and I would like to provide a comment regarding the Southwest Capitol Highway Expansion Project, which is now at 60 percent. In a meeting with P-Bot project manager Steve Segathy on October 13th, my husband and I were notified that P-Bot will need to obtain a temporary construction permit for the entirety of our side yard, as well as the left portion of our front yard, which was designed by Portland Japanese Gardens Landscape Architect after we purchased our home in 2014. It was our goal during our design to beautify the neighborhood and give back to the wildlife that lives here. Our yard is heavily landscaped with Japanese maple trees, northwest berry bushes, natural rock and stone. We've also been told that our property line was incorrectly approved by the city upon construction of our home in 2008, and they will need to acquire an additional eight inches of our property long term. This project will not only affect my home personally, it will also greatly affect the look of this beautifully tree-lined street and the wildlife population in this historic area. We moved here from San Francisco so we could have the street and urban forest which surrounds us. We built a large koi pond and waterfall in our backyard and a connecting street on our side yard, which will need to be removed for construction. I watch birds feel the trees outside my kitchen windows, which are currently planned for removal. My daughter's bedroom's windows will now look out through chain-link fencing out onto the public sidewalk and bite lanes constructed outside our home. Our master bedroom is currently sheltered for privacy and street lighting from a very large ash tree that is on the corner of our property. It will also be removed. The two multifamily units that are behind us on Southwest Capitol Highway will lose their street parking, as well as package mail delivery and trash services that will have nowhere to pull over for the entirety of Southwest Capitol Highway. We are consistently being told by P-Bot that this project is required for safety concerns, primarily uncontrolled vehicle speeds. However, the only safety measures that have been implemented is a speed reduction to 25 miles per hour. There is nothing in the plan such as a speed drop or a signal. I recognize roads get widened every day, however, I implore you to please get involved. I ask for a more moderate approach that supports everyone's needs in the community, not just a city's agenda. We have crumbling sidewalks in our neighborhood that need to be repaired, and I'm told that those also cannot be addressed with this project. So I just come to you for, to be heard because I'm being affected, my home, the homeowners around me are being affected, and we feel very unheard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for coming in. We appreciate it. Could I get a written copy of your testimony?
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner, you gave it.
You have one. I send it to you when I-
Ms. Firpo, is your contact information, do we have your contact information?
Yes, it's on her request form.
Great. My office will follow up with you as well.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Your garden sounds beautiful.
It is.
Thank you.
It's about to be demolished.
Maybe, maybe not. We'll see what Commissioner Udaly's, what magic she can work. She's good at these things.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anytime.
Thanks for coming.
Anytime. Next item, next individual, please.
Item 1258, request of Lightning Super Creativity XXI PDX to address Council regarding domino effect topless the political establishment.
Morning.
Before I get started, I'd like to ask, since Star did not appear, I'd like to do my full three minutes. We'll still stay within your timeframe, sir.
Oh, yeah, you get, communications, you always get your three.
Three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, my name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Super Creativity. What I'd like to speak about is personally, the personal vendetta of Robert Mahler III against President Donald Trump. Again, I'm asking you to wrap up this investigation. I'm asking you to do your job. When William Barr is the AG, I'm asking him to create another special counsel. You need to go into retirement, go back to private practice. You've really missed the mark. You've missed the target. You're not even a threat to President Trump. Go back to your private practice. You've really failed miserably, miserably. And again, I'm asking you to go into retirement, step away, and understand this is a personal vendetta when James Comey got fired, your good friend, when Rosenstein and Comey signed the FISA applications to get the FISA warrant upon the unverified dossier paid by Hillary Clinton. Get real, Mr. Mahler. You're a disgrace. You're a disgrace to the FBI. You're a disgrace to the United States, and let the President do his job. Video, please.
Thanks, sir.
The dominos will begin to fall. Hillary Clinton for prison.
All right, next individual. Next individual, please.
Item 1259, request of Don Stevens to address Council regarding proposed regulations on diesel emissions for construction sites.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm not Don Stevens. Don Stevens is here, and Guy Berliner, my colleague, is here. And Don has asked me to speak in his place. I do hope that my three minutes will have the same impact as that, as those dominos.
It's a hard act to follow, isn't it?
But I'm not sure I will. Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Wesley Ward. Don, Guy Berliner, and I live in Brooklyn, home of the UP rail yard. We are members of Portland Neighbors for Diesel Action. We're an informal group formed almost a year ago from our neighborhood association. Our goal is to heighten local awareness of and concern about diesel particulates in particular and to encourage you, our elected officials, to act as strongly as legally possible to reduce diesel pollution as quickly as possible. We do this for our health and that of neighborhoods across Portland. In our work with neighborhoods, we hear real and growing concern about unregulated toxic diesel. As a grassroots group of volunteers, we are kindling a fire of awareness to support those working on this issue at the local and state level. We know that the state has the key to a real solution to this problem, but we think an important beginning is what Portland can do. And without that important beginning in Portland, we may never move the needle very far at the state level. Now, or well, tomorrow is the time to take a strong stand in Portland against dirty diesels at all construction sites funded by public dollars, not just the city and county's own projects. Someday, the same standard should apply to all large Portland construction sites as a condition of permitting. This will take continuing work and strong leadership against opposition which has prevailed for far too long. Without your leadership, the oldest and dirtiest diesels will continue to spew their toxics into our neighborhoods. We don't want to leave this problem for the younger generation to deal with. Thank you for the chance to speak to you today, and we'll be back with you tomorrow.
Thank you. We appreciate it. And, gentlemen, just to underscore a couple of finer points here, number one, we are, in fact, we did just pass a diesel procurement strategy for the city of Portland, so we're leading by example on all of the projects that we're engaged in. But you're also correct that we are preempted by state statute from actually regulating diesel beyond the vehicles that we, and the equipment that we control, and that's something that we should be working on together down in Salem.
That's right, Mayor. We should, we should loosen the state preemption-
We should.
-as much as possible.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Dr. Stevens, as well. Don, Mr. Stevens, thank you. Next individual, please.
Item 1260, request of Mary Bowers to address Council regarding Home Forward.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, Mayor Wheeler and the City Council. I'm here to talk to you about Home Forward. I have spoke with, from homelessness to tenants of Home Forward. As you probably know, Home Forward at one time was Housing Authority of Portland and of Montloma County. Home Forward treats the elderly, disabled, veterans, and so on like garbage. And this is uncalled for. We don't deserve to have any benefits like low-income housing or any kind of housing. We are lowlifes. We put ourselves in this mess. And so why should we step down to your level? And why does Home Forward have property management run property that they have, and they don't communicate with each other? I myself is now homeless. With four cats and social security disability, who has a broken foot for eight months, who needs surgery. I was just hospitalized during Thanksgiving with RSV. I don't know if you know what that is, but it's very serious, and it takes a long time for you to get over it. I am homeless because they evicted my housemate. I went to them for housing, and all they care is, "Sorry, we can't help you." They have no respect or dignity for us. They need to take ADA Act classes to understand the laws that pertain to us. It is really important that they take these classes. They need to take etiquette, customer service classes, to understand how to talk to us instead of like, "We don't need to listen to you. We don't need to talk to you," or "They're just downright rude to us." They need to have these classes to understand where we are, but they don't care. And they need to be respectful and abide by the ADA Act, but they also need to abide by their rules and regulations that they put forth to us. They need to abide by them, too. So that is the fourth on us as tenants. We speak up. Home Forward needs to listen and do what needs to be done, from safety of tenants to black mold, and we, the homeless, comes to apply for a place, not shun us and just give us respect and listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing, and I will pass your concerns along. We appreciate you coming in and sharing them with us.
You're welcome.
Thank you. That completes communications. Which items have been pulled from the consent agenda, Carla?
We have 1269 and 1274.
1269 and 1274, please call the roll on the remainder of the consent agenda.
Udaly?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Consent agenda is adopted. With the pulling of the time certain item, we need to find about 20 to 25 minutes of other things, so I'm going to ask that we move 1281 into this slot, please.
1281, amend police review board code to implement a tentative agreement negotiated with the Portland Police Association to modify the stipulated discipline provisions.
And I understand Mark Amberger is here. Here he is. Good morning, Mark. How are you today?
Good, thank you. Mark Amberger, the City Attorney's Office.
Did you want to give a presentation on this?
Oh, yes, sure. I will be happy to do that. This is an ordinance amending the, proposed ordinance to amend the stipulated discipline ordinance that was passed by Council back in August of this year, which that was enacted pursuant to an agreement reached with the U.S. Department of Justice under the settlement agreement with the Department of Justice as part of the, the city's compliance with that agreement. The stipulated discipline in particular was implemented to help bring the city into compliance with the accountability provisions of the settlement agreement. When the August, August ordinance was passed by Council to approve the stipulated discipline process for the Police Bureau, there were a, two or three amendments that were, to the originally proposed amendments that were proposed and ultimately adopted by Council. One of the, and the, the Portland Police Association, the union representing the sergeants, criminalists, detectives, and line officers in the Bureau, basically objected to the, the amendments on the basis that the city had not fulfilled its collective bargaining obligations before implementing the amendments. After discussion, and they objected to implementing those amendments, and they also threatened to file an unfair labor practice complaint against the city because of the, the city had not bargained over those amendments prior to implementing them. We did negotiate with the union, and ultimately, the agreement that was reached was the, the union agreed with all of the amendments with the, with the exception, the exception of one provision.
Excuse me. This is- Okay, I need you to stop shouting because you're interrupting the testimony. No, I need, I need you to please stop interrupting the testimony. Listen. I need you to either be quiet, or I need you to leave. Those are your choices. Sorry, Mr. Amberger. Go ahead and continue.
Thank you, your honor, or mayor. So one provision of the stipulated, I won't go into the details of the stipulated discipline that was a process that was approved by Council, but one provision would have allowed for, upon agreement of the union, the police chief, and city council, they could approve additional categories of cases, types of cases, that would be eligible for the stipulated discipline process. And they, that was one of the provisions the union objected to. The original language said it could be, additional categories of cases could be approved by the agreement of the union, the chief, and the commissioner in charge. The amendment was to remove commissioner in charge and say they had to go back in front of city council. So, long story short on this, the agreement that we reached with the union was to delete that, that provision from the stipulated discipline ordinance. So if, in the future, if there are any categories of cases that the union or the city believe might be eligible for the stipulated discipline process, we will have to go through a negotiating process with the union and then ultimately make, a decision by council would need to be made on whether to approve those additional categories of cases. So the amendment is just to remove that provision of code, which is subsection J2E of the Police Review Board Code, Portland Code Section 3.20.140.
And just to, to be clear, Mr. Amberger, that still has to be negotiated, then? So we're not dodging the issue, we're just moving that to a later date? Is that correct?
Correct. If, it means that if there is a, another category of, category of cases that either side feels would be eligible to include in the stipulated discipline process, that would have to be negotiated and approved.
Would this be negotiated in the upcoming collective bargaining agreement, or is this a separate issue? How, when would this be negotiated?
It could be, it could be either, either one. It could be brought up as part of the contract, general contract negotiations, or it could be brought up as a separate- be brought up as a separate standalone bargaining issue.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, colleagues? Commissioner Yu Daily?
I'm just, I'm struggling a little bit to remember this item because it came for, before us a while ago, I think, but I believe that was my amendment requiring these cases to come back to full council. So, the ultimate outcome of striking this language is that they will come back to council.
They would, the ultimate outcome is would have to be negotiated with the union and come back to council for approval, yes.
Okay.
Very good. Public testimony on this item, Carla.
Yes, we have two people signed up. Please come on up, Dan Handelman and Maggie.
Good morning.
Morning, Mayor Wheeler and commissioners. Dan Handelman with Portland Cop Watch. And I was here in September, actually, when you passed the last amendments to this code. It was September 5th, even according to the paperwork here. And I'm a little bit even more confused now than I was when I came in this morning. The city attorney just said and confirmed to Commissioner Yu Daily that this doesn't change anything. The city council still has to approve whatever changes are made. So I don't understand why the PPA would want to get this pulled. My, my speculation, and that's all we have, since the PPA won't come here, like the rest of the community has to, to talk to you about what we're concerned about, is that they pulled it out because it specifically said that the parts of the code that say what things can't be subjected to stipulated discipline are pretty much permanent and off-limits for negotiation. And I think that by passing this, you're giving them backdoor to be able to pull out those very serious discrimination, retaliation, disparate treatment, excessive force, and deadly force cases. Because now it doesn't say you, you can't, you can't negotiate about those. So I think it should be really clear about what it is that you're passing and what it is the PPA's motivation was behind this. Because otherwise, it just seems like you're back at square, by pulling this out, it doesn't remove your requirement to negotiate with them and doesn't remove city council's final approval on it. So I would call Daryl Turner up to testify on the record about what they're trying to do with this. I also should add that last time that I was here testifying about this code, we mentioned a number of things that need to be amended in the police review board code that never get addressed, even though it keeps coming back before council. And one of them is in the settlement agreement. It says that the police reviewer can send cases back for further investigation. That is included in the directive around the police review board, but it's never been included in the city code. And I don't know why. It sort of seems like if it doesn't get included in the code, then if the DOJ leaves town and the police bureau decides to change the directive, that won't happen anymore.
Thank you. Commissioner Fritz?
Well, to that last point, presumably if it doesn't get changed in code, the DOJ is not going to leave town because they're not going to sign off on the settlement agreement having been implemented. To your previous point, it seems to me that this just clarifies who is doing the bargaining. And it would be commissioner in charge rather than the whole council. And then the whole council approves whatever they come up with after a public hearing. That's my understanding of what we're doing today.
Well, then why didn't they change the code to say that? So what I, what I'm worried about, Commissioner Fritz, is the lack of that language that prohibits bargaining around those serious cases going to stipulated discipline. That's, that part of the code is now being removed by removing this entire paragraph. Because it says, with the exception of those things that are outlined in the previous paragraph, all these other things can be bargained about. But with it silent on that, that means they can go back to the table and say, "We don't want, we don't want these excluded anymore. We want officers to be able to go in and admit to wrongdoing in these very serious cases without it going before the police review board." So I, I would recommend strongly that, that city council leave in the sentence that says, "With the exception of what's in there, everything else can be negotiated by the commissioner in charge." I mean, you just changed city council, the commissioner in charge, if that's what their, if that's what the goal is. Otherwise, I think you're being tricked into something that maybe the negotiators and Mr. Amberger didn't notice.
But the code already says what kinds of case of investigations are.
Excluded, right, exactly.
Are, no, are eligible.
Right. It says which, what are eligible and it says what is not eligible. Right? The previous paragraph that was referenced.
Yeah. So why is that not clear?
What's, J1, the paragraph it's referenced, is the paragraph that says what you cannot send to stipulate discipline, not the things that are.
And we're not amending that. So if we were going to amend that and add these more egregious cases.
But by saying that, with the exception of those categories, these other things can be extended. So that means by removing that, they can bargain to get those other things put into the stipulated discipline.
Then that would have to come back to council to change J1.
Sure it does, sure it does. But I just want to make it clear that, you know, the reason those are excluded, those are the kinds of cases that are very important to the community and they shouldn't be subject to stipulated discipline. So, the code was clear about it and now it's not as clear about it.
I guess we maybe have a disagreement, so I think it's now even clearer.
Commissioner Yu Daily?
Commissioner Fritz, I'm glad you feel that way because I feel somewhat responsible for this confusion. And I agree that if they didn't want to accept the amendment, we should have just reverted to the original language. That would make more sense to me. But if you, if you feel that we're actually in a better position, then thank you, PPA.
Well, let's, let's chew on this a bit. Let's, let's hear out Maggie and then maybe we can have Mark come back and back. Thank you.
I want to thank Cop Watch for their testimony about code wording. Because I think this is our democracy at work, where I, I like to think of democracy as a car with manual transmission. And we, the people, need to manually, you know, work on it and tell you guys how we want things worded and coded. And the reason I want to compare this to federal policy 811, which is our housing policy, which was very poorly worded and written, and so many things were left out of it, which left the contractors the ability to define what housing and social services would be and which is why we've got so much, you know, caca going on in there. And, and we need to have a very specific, I, I agree, there is a, a possibility of retaliation happening. Like when I talk to cops, some of them want to listen to what I have to say and others, you just see the light go dead in their eyes and they just don't, they just hate, you know, the situation with poor people. And, and it's like, they, they don't feel like we deserve any rights. And, and I was just at the Human Rights Commission Council this past Thursday and, you know, of course, it was the Universal Declaration of Human Rights on December 10th. And I think we really need to look at the Cop Watch, you know, thing as from a human rights perspective. There, you know, we, we need you guys to protect us, not to assault us.
Thank you. All right, good. Mark, could you come on back up, please? So you, you heard the back and forth on the issue of stipulated discipline and the exception categories. Can, can you give us your perspective, please?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Again, Mark Amberger with the City Attorney's Office. A couple of points. First of all, with regard to the, the union's collective bargaining rights, that, that's a matter of state law and the, the union can always put a proposal on the table. There's nothing that prevents them from doing that, whether, regardless of whatever code provision we're talking about, we, we would just need to evaluate whether it's something that the city is required to bargain over or not required to bargain over. So that's not going to change regardless of whatever provisions city council might, might put into, into city code. The other, second point I want to make is that it should be kept in mind that this stipulated discipline process comes out of negotiated amendments to the U.S. Department of Justice settlement agreement, which basically contains, contains the same language. And to, to change, if there was going to be a change along the lines of what Mr. Handelman was suggesting, even if somehow council was, was willing to go that direction, it would require another amendment to the, at the current time, the U.S. Department of Justice settlement agreement, which would require approval of the Department of Justice as well as approval by the federal district court, Judge Simon at this point. And the, the final point that I would make is that I, I agree with the, the comments that were made by Commissioners Yu Daily and, and Fritz, that this actually, in my view, actually clarifies that there's taking out this, out of city code in any way, the possibility of an, creating an exception, another exception of a category of cases that would be eligible for stipulated discipline. I believe the code is very clear at this point, particularly with removing this section. There are certain cases, types of cases that are not eligible for discipline that Mr. Handelman mentioned. And there are very specifically defined cases that, a limited category of cases that are eligible for stipulated discipline. But the more serious cases, discrimination, uses of force, disparate treatment, retaliation, officer-involved shootings, in custody deaths, those, it's very clear in code at this point in time that they are not eligible for stipulated discipline. And to change that would require further action of council as well as amendments to the U.S. Department of Justice settlement agreement.
Very good. Any further questions? Please call the roll.
Yu Daily?
Well, thank you for explaining that to us. You know, perhaps more than any other bureau, I feel with the police, the entire council is held responsible for our policies and for the actions of the police, although the mayor is the police commissioner. And this item or this, this disagreement just kind of highlights a couple of things for me. One is the need for the council to be engaged in these conversations before they come up on the agenda. Two is for clear legal guidance. I would have never offered an amendment if I had known it could provoke a lawsuit or that it was in violation of some other rule. So that would be appreciated. I do feel like the reaction of the PPA was unnecessary as, you know, my intent was because we are held responsible as a body for the police, that we be responsible as a body for that oversight. And so I don't appreciate the response, but I do appreciate their ultimate proposal, which as you explained, makes the policy clearer. So I vote aye.
And Commissioner, if I, if I might, just to clarify, there's nothing unlawful, so to speak, about making an amendment. And the unions always have a, a right to, they choose whether to assert their collective bargaining rights or not. And they, in this case, the, the PPA elected to assert their collective bargaining rights here, but there was nothing per se unlawful about making, making a proposed amendment. So, but we could discuss, I'd be happy to discuss. I'd be happy to discuss further.
Yeah, I feel like I could use some more information. Thanks.
Thank you for your work on this. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, for bringing this clarification, Commissioner Yu Daily for being supportive of it. It's, as Commissioner Yu Daily said, all of us are involved in police accountability. And ultimately, the commissioner in charge, which is the mayor, has the most. And I can't imagine any commissioner in charge agreeing to the kinds of light sent, a light sentence in an egregious case as, as a matter of stipulated discipline. That just wouldn't make any political sense, never mind moral or ethical sense. So I'm very comfortable with this. Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Thanks for your hard work on this. Appreciate it. And thank you, colleagues. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Let's do a couple of times cer, or excuse me, second readings till we get to our time certain. If you could call 1282, please, Carla.
1282, update solid waste and recycling collect, collection code. Add definitions and align terminology with Metro.
Colleagues, this is a second reading of an ordinance. We've heard a presentation. Public testimony's already been taken. Please call the roll.
Yu Daily?
Aye.
Fritz?
This is an issue that people care about. When the mayor and I did our legislative agenda town hall at Southeast Campus, several community members shared their concerns about air quality and diesel pollution. And I support this. Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Item 1292, second reading.
Authorize intergovernmental agreement with Metro for participation in the sidewalk labs replica pilot test in an amount not to exceed $152,433.
Please call the roll.
Yu Daily?
Because there were concerns expressed last week, I just want to make a few closing remarks. One, I want to take a moment to remind people what this data is and what is, what it is not. It is a detailed, full-scale model of how people travel through our region. It's data that can be used to augment, enhance, and possibly replace PBOT's existing data collection efforts, such as volunteer count programs, real-time data collection efforts, transportation modeling within PBOT's planning group, and pre-post project impact studies. It is data that has the potential to greatly enhance PBOT's ability to understand how people are moving through our transportation system, as well as if and how investments in this system ultimately impact mobility and motivate transportation choices. It is not people-specific data that in any way compromises the privacy of Portlanders. It is not designed to track, monitor, or identify specific individuals. I want to thank Michael Kerr with PBOT for his work on this. I vote aye.
Fritz?
At the hearing last week, it was confirmed that when the council adopts a privacy policy early in the new year, this will be subject to it. Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. We, according to my watch, it is now 10:15. We'll move to the time certain items. We're going to read 1262 and 63 together and we'll vote on 63 first when we get to it. But if you could read both of those items together, please.
1262, dissolve the Socially Responsible Investments Committee. And 1263, adopt city of Portland investment policy.
Colleagues, the city of Portland manages an investment portfolio of $1.9 billion that the fiscal year-to-date has earned $11.9 million in interest earnings, which helps to fund city programs and services. Our proposed investment policy is more restrictive than what state law currently requires. We've chosen to not include corporate issuers involved with industries such as fossil fuels, financial services, and the retail sale of firearms, allowing only a select list of highly-rated securities. Corporate securities provide diversification and an opportunity to earn an additional yield over alternative investment types such as U.S. Treasuries and agency securities. We project that the addition of this select group of corporate issuers would potentially contribute between $900,000 and $1.5 million in additional annual investment earnings for the city of Portland. We appreciate the time and the effort that the Social Responsibility Investment Committee members devoted to attending meetings, studying the city's investment policy, and for providing thoughtful, objective feedback on a complex and multi-dimensional issue. Their participation has been critical in helping the city council to continue its mission of promoting a prosperous, educated, healthy, and equitable community. In the interest of transparency, Treasury has posted the city's investment portfolio online since 2013. These month-end, line-by-line portfolio reports can always be found at www-portlandoregon.gov/brfss. No, you will not remember that, but if you Google it, you'll find it. Click on the button that says "Review" where the city's money is invested. With that, we have our finance team here, including Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Cooperman here today. Good morning. I don't know who's giving the presentation.
Bridget O'Callaghan.
Bridget is, great, thank you.
Good morning, mayor and, and commissioners. For the record, my name is Bridget O'Callaghan and I am honored to be the treasurer for the city of Portland.
Thank you. Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you. I'm here today, first, I'd like to present the investment policy, that is item number Oregon law pertaining to the investment of public funds requires the city to adopt an investment policy annually. I'd like to highlight a few points as background. Some of these the mayor covered a moment ago. The investment policy outlines the framework and criteria for managing the city's investment program. The city's investment policy describes the framework and criteria for investing the city's cash assets. The city's policy is written in accordance with Oregon law, which is ORS 295.135, and is brought before council for adoption annually. That is our purpose today. The city's investment objectives are first to preserve the principal, to ensure liquidity of the funds, and then to earn a market return for the city. Investment earnings make a significant financial contribution to the city's budget and to the programs and services that the bureaus provide. Investment earnings, net of an admin fee to cover Treasury's operating costs, are distributed to city funds. In fiscal year 2017-18, Treasury earned $25 million. Year-to-date fiscal 2018-2019 through October 31st, Treasury has earned $11.9 million. Treasury will continue to use its professional expertise and discretion to make investment portfolio decisions on behalf of the city. In the interest of transparency, as the mayor mentioned a moment ago, the city has posted our investment portfolio online since 2013. These are month-end, line-by-line portfolio reports, and can be found at the city's website, The investment policy before you today includes a number of housekeeping revisions that are intended to improve the clarity and readability of the policy itself. These are not material changes. Please see Exhibit A1 for a redlined version of the document. The policy also contains a material change that would allow the city treasurer to invest in a select group of corporate issuers that are referenced in Appendix A of the policy, and I would direct your attention to Exhibit A2 for that. We are recommending a select list of high-quality issuers be added to the eligible list of investments for the city. The City of Portland's Treasury Division's analysis began, first of all, with the state of Oregon's law pertaining to the investment of public funds. The state's parameters would have allowed the City of Portland to potentially invest in a universe of 35 issuers. Our proposal is much more restrictive than the state law requires. We have chosen not to include corporate issuers involved in certain industries as fossil fuels, financial services, and the retail sale of firearms. We are proposing to allow a much smaller list of these highly-rated securities. Corporate securities provide diversification and an opportunity to earn additional yield over alternative investment types such as Treasuries and agency securities. We project that in addition to the select group of corporate issuers, we would potentially contribute between $900,000 and $1.5 million in investment earnings, and these funds would be available to bureaus to fund their services to the community. Thank you. With that, I will answer any questions.
Commissioner Fritz?
Thank you for your work, and thank you for bringing this. Could you clarify, I notice, I'm sure we'll get some discussion about the particular securities, companies that you're suggesting we could invest in. I notice one of them is Nike, and I'm wondering why not Columbia Sportswear, why not Under Armour, why not Adidas?
It really came down to, starting with the universe of available securities under the Oregon revised statutes, and then from there, narrowing the list down. So they were not on the top 10.
Thank you.
They actually, I don't believe, have securities that would even qualify under the ORS. So they're just not in the investable universe, even if we wanted to.
So, Madam Treasurer and Madam CFO, I want to make sure we're speaking in a way that people watching and listening understand. Are you talking about buying stocks?
No.
What are you talking about?
We're talking about the debt, the commercial bonds that would be issued by these corporations.
So we're not investing directly in the company? We're not taking ownership equity in any of the companies that we're investing in?
Correct. We're not allowed to, by state law.
Okay. So debt sounds risky.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Debt can be risky, but you manage that by the parameters you put around the program, first of all. So we are only limiting ourselves to a very select list of highly-rated issuers. We also monitor those. We are requiring that the ratings for these particular issuers be validated by two independent issuing rating agencies. So...
Does it matter which two?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't presently. We're just requiring two typically. It's one of the top three.
Standard and course. Okay.
So the state law requires a minimum of credit rating, and we've set a minimum AA. The city's investment policy goes one slight notch lower, and we're allowing AA minus, but it does have to be at least two rating agencies with that rating or higher.
So when we're talking about...
Just one other, but we've also added another criteria, which is that the bonds cannot be longer than three years. State law doesn't have a duration or a term limit for those securities. We've chosen to limit it to three years and under, which, again, limits our risk in owning those securities, and we're typically buy and hold. So the combination of a short term plus the high credit rating increases the likelihood that we will receive back principal at the time that that security matures. And that's how we get to the universe of only 35 names. If we didn't have that three-year limit, the universe could potentially be larger.
Okay. And so just to sort of latch on to the question that was asked earlier, this isn't a criticism of, say, for example, I think somebody mentioned Columbia Sportswear. This is not a criticism of Columbia Sportswear or their business practices, or their vitality as a company. It is a technical question about the kind of debt instruments that they use.
Right.
And they are not eligible under state law.
Right. There are no securities that they have outstanding within that three-year window. If they came out this afternoon and issued five-year debt, we couldn't buy that either, even though it might have the right credit rating for us.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Public testimony?
Yes, we have 11 people signed up.
Very good. Two minutes each. Name for the record, please. Thanks a lot.
The first three, please come on up, are Hung Nam, Adam Segal, and Will Singer.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Hung Nam. I'm one of the members of the Socially Responsible Investment Committee, and I'm actually quite disappointed that I contacted your office to be able to give invited testimony for longer than three minutes, and I, you know, despite multiple calls and emails, never even got a response. I have serious problems with this resolution. First of all, looking at your resolution...
Can I do, I'm sorry, can I do this? I didn't get your email, but since you are a member of the committee, let's go ahead and give them three minutes, and I'm sure people will have questions.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I apologize for that. Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
Well, first of all, looking at the resolution, in Section 13G, it's that whole column that says why the change is being made, and there's no rationale there for the change being made. And I don't know if we could put that up on the screen right now, but I'm really concerned about, there's a major change being made here, and I see no rationale, and it seems like an odd time to be making this change. Treasury rates have just gone up pretty dramatically compared to what they've been at, at, you know, near-zero rates. And right now, investing in Treasuries is financially sound and secure, whereas investing in corporate bonds is actually risky. When we talk about, you know, the three credit, there are basically three credit agencies that rate corporate bonds, and it's been well documented, they've completely failed. With the rating mortgage-backed securities in 2006, 2007, 2008, right up until the crash, they rated many securities as double-A, triple-A, that turned out to be filled with toxic assets. If had Portland been invested in these securities then, we would have lost money. Same is true with Enron, which, by the way, used to own PGE. Those bonds were also rated investment-grade, and they also turned out to be bad. And so anyway, I seriously question relying on Moody's S&amp;P and Fitch's credit ratings to make these investment decisions. But more importantly, there's been a long public process that has led to the creation of the Socially Responsible Investment Committee. Testimony from not only people in the climate justice movement, people in the human rights community, and so on, that have expressed serious concern, and I'm glad that you are maintaining this policy of not investing in fossil fuels and financial firms, and also adding on firearms. Why not adopt the investment policy that the committee, that our committee submitted in September 2016, that also added several other companies? And really, you know, it would have no financial impact, because all these companies, their bonds are not, you know, don't have the requisite credit ratings anyway, but it would really do the same thing that we're doing by not naming that we're not investing in fossil fuels and so on. It's part of a national and international boycott campaigns, because these do make a major impact in making the kind of change that we want to see here in Portland and in the world.
So your time is up. Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
The testimony we had prior to your testimony was, these are corporate securities of three years' duration that are highly rated and therefore are relatively safe. Which of the corporate securities on the list that's proposed before us, in your view, would we have lost money on?
You know, I'm not sure about which of these that we might have lost money on, but all I'm saying is that the whole system of these three credit rating agencies getting paid by the same companies to rate their bonds has been well documented to be a conflict of interest that has led to the failure of rating Enron bonds accurately or rating mortgage-backed securities accurately. That has led to major losses.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. My name is Adam Segal. I'm with Jewish Voice for Peace, and the next few speakers are also members of Jewish Voice for Peace, and we're a member organization of Occupation Free Portland. More than a year ago, in April 2017, the council voted to end investments in corporate securities as they matured. One unfortunate result of that decision was the failure to call out nine corporations, the quote "worst of the worst" for their bad behavior. In particular, JVP believed it was important to specifically identify Caterpillar Incorporated for egregious violations across multiple, quote, "social and values concerns," cited in the Socially Responsible Investments Committee September 30th, 2016 report. These included Caterpillar's role in Israel's illegal occupation of Palestinian lands, its violations of indigenous peoples' rights at Standing Rock, and its broad involvement in the extractive fossil fuel industry and direct contributions to catastrophic climate change. JVP Portland does not support the blanket ban on corporate securities. We support the targeted exclusion of investments in particular corporations based on clear and explicit criteria for socially responsible investments. The power of such a targeted exclusion is not simply in the divestment itself, but rather in the public statement about who is being excluded and why exactly the City of Portland refuses to invest in them. This is the City of Portland's chance to influence behavior of unethical corporations for the better. Caterpillar doesn't fear the loss of one city's investments. They do fear international embarrassment and a strong public statements against their complicity in human rights violations. We ask that you to consider that a truly progressive city would actively choose to make use of this power. And, yeah, as a personal thing, I just want to add, I wish I didn't have to say this, but I am proudly Jewish, and there's nothing anti-Semitic about me choosing to stand for Palestinian human rights. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Will Singer, also with Jewish Voice for Peace. It's our understanding that the mayor's new resolution and the two accompanying exhibits is that Portland will return to investing in corporate securities, but only those issued by the companies listed in the resolution. Those companies were apparently drawn from the Multnomah County's investment portfolio. Unfortunately, they were not chosen with public review. We in Jewish Voice for Peace find this unacceptable, because the resolution returns the city to corporate investment without socially responsible investment screen, without the Socially Responsible Investments Committee to review and make recommendations based on explicit socially responsible investment criteria. It's good that the SRIC recommendations are reflected in the list of corporate securities allowed by the mayor's resolution, but that's almost meaningless without a clear statement of the basis for excluding those securities listed on the SRIC Do Not Buy list. The companies excluded here will not be hurt by losing out on Portland's investments. It's unlikely they will even notice. We believe that Portland should do more than just decline to invest. The city can use its voice to actively call out the unethical, destructive, or exploitive behaviors of powerful corporations. We don't want to be quiet about our socially responsible investment policy. We want to shout from the rooftops why Caterpillar is on the list, because we want other cities, other institutional investors also deciding, hey, maybe we shouldn't be investing in mass murder, whether it's in Yemen or Gaza. We shouldn't be investing in companies that destroy the environment or cheat their workers. We only get that if we have clear and explicit criteria for our investments, clear and explicit criteria for rejecting companies like Caterpillar that profit off the suffering and dispossession of an entire people. Yes, at the hands of the Israeli government and military, supported by the U.S. government and our taxes, and we should not be afraid to say so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next three are Rod Such, Sandy Polashuk, and Aisha Lorenz Al-Sayed.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Rod Such, and I am also with Jewish Voice for Peace and Occupation Free Portland. And I want to start by thanking Commissioners Udaley and Fish for inviting us to suggest amendments to the resolution. And concretely, here are our suggested amendments. Amendment A, formally restore the seven criteria that the city considers in making an investment, so that the investment is evaluated on the basis of environmental concerns, health concerns, including weapons production, concerns about abusive labor practices, concerns about corrupt corporate ethics and governance, concerns about extreme tax avoidance, concerns about exercise of such a level of market dominance so as to disrupt normal competitive market forces, and concerns about impacts on human rights. Amendment B, formally restore the Socially Responsible Investments Committee so that it can receive public input on proposed corporate investments and make recommendations to the city council. And finally, Amendment C, adopt and release to the media the report submitted by the SRIC dated September 30th, 2016. And regarding that last amendment, I think it also touches on a point of, why did you create the committee in the first place? Why did you solicit expert opinion on the investment, and then just completely ignore the committee's report and findings? It's not a good precedent for inviting citizen participation in city government when you create a committee and then you simply ignore their findings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Wheeler, I do know your name, and commissioners. My name is Sandy Polashuk. I live in northeast Portland. I represent 350 PDX. 350 PDX strongly advocates that our city aligns its investments with its values, just as we advocate for everyone to do. Portland has made us proud with its landmark planning and actions on climate change and sustainability, most recently by banning new fossil fuel infrastructure and vowing to transition to 100% clean energy by 2050. Proud again when at this year's C40 Summit, Portland was recognized with an award for its 2015 Climate Action Plan. Despite these bold actions, it took over two years from our first ask for this council to place fossil fuels on its Do Not Buy list. While we supported that action, our ask remains a straight-out resolution to permanently commit to divestment from fossil fuel investments, as Multnomah County, Metro, Eugene, Corvallis, Ashland, Seattle, San Francisco, Berkeley, Oakland, Fremont, Richmond... Fremont, Richmond, Palo Alto, and Santa Monica, and many other cities across our nation have done. The fossil fuel divestment campaign was launched in the fall of 2012 by 350.org to cut off the financing and social license of the fossil fuel industry. In these six years, divestment commitments of over $7 trillion have been made, 15% by governmental entities. The urgency of keeping fossil fuels in the ground has only grown with time. 350 PDX urges you to recognize this urgency and return to your offices and begin the process of drafting Portland's fossil fuel divestment resolution for quick passage. It will not be difficult. There are many models to draw from.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. I'm Aisha Lorenz Al Said, member of Jewish Voice for Peace, as well as Americans United for Palestinian Human Rights and Muslim Community Center of Portland, among other groups. The resolution does admit the nine corporations recommended for the Do Not Buy list by SRIC. This is a welcome development. However, we believe that not including clear and explicit socially responsible investment criteria in this resolution virtually guarantees that Portland's corporate securities investments will not align with the values of all Portlanders. Indeed, while those corporations listed in the resolution may have not sunk to the level of the worst of the worst, there are well-grounded, reasonable ethical objections to investments, even to this short, select list. It's also very telling that some major groups are united in opposing this. Thank you for this opportunity to present our views.
Thank you.
The next three are Peter Miller, Dan Handelman, and Maggie.
Dan, do you want to start, please?
I'll let Peter go first. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. My name is Peter Miller. I'm with Americans United for Palestinian Human Rights, and I was part of the campaign to engage the Socially Responsible Investment Committee on its, the investments in the Do Not Buy list. And while I appreciate that the companies that were identified on the Do Not Buy list are not a part of the investments, I have to echo sentiments that were expressed already that it was highly, highly desirable to keep social responsible investment criteria as part of a city policy, that there is a value in calling out companies for their bad behavior because that's how one of the impacts, the most positive impact you can have in declining to investment companies, explain why, hopefully, they would do better in the future if they, if possibly can. I also suggest that the Socially Responsible Investment Committee was a very valuable part of the city policy. The people working in that were diligent. They did a lot of work for the city as volunteers. The work was very valuable. They provided citizen input, and I would sure like to see that committee continued. One of the aspects I think the city council found onerous was the amount of time it took for the city council. But just like with the treasurer, you give them guidelines, and if the treasurer makes the detailed decisions on what to invest in, you should empower the Socially Responsible Investment Committee to make those decisions, and you basically, you know, give them the power to make the screens, not take up your time, that you have a good system there. So I think you should continue it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners, I'm Dan Handelman, and I'm talking on behalf of our, the parent group of Portland Cop Watch, Peace and Justice Works, which signed a letter last year supporting the disinvestment from corporations with bad ethics. And I want to echo all the statements that have already been made, that this new ordinance doesn't seem to list the criteria of what we want to see corporations do if we're going to be investing in them at all. I don't, I can't even see if the three criteria that were listed about firearms and fossil fuels listed in the, in the ordinance itself. I'm not sure where those are written down. You know, in the broader sense of things, I mean, I'm not, really, I'm not understanding how buying debt works, but it does seem like you should be investing in something that's a little bit less risky if you're going to invest the people's money. And if corporations have extra money to throw around and give back to corporations, they should be paying their workers better instead. And with the list of corporations that are already on there, and somebody already mentioned their reasons not to invest in them, we at Peace and Justice Works often work with people in the animal rights movement, and several of them are well-known to be using animal testing, and that's something that could probably be listed to the, you know, as one of the criteria that you shouldn't invest in if you would let the Social Just, Socially Responsible Investment Committee continue to meet and make recommendations. So again, you really should have a list of ethical criteria, not just financial criteria, and that's the only thing I really heard discussed here this morning.
Okay, I'm united with Jews for Peace, I think, and, and also with the, you know, non-investment in fossil fuels. And, and here's how you can take it even further, is you can melt down all those fossil, those engines that run on fossil fuel that the state uses to get around and replace them with electric engines. And also, you can take all those fuel, oil, gas-run leaf blowers, and you can get rid of those, and you can start using old-fashioned sweepers with handles on them. And now, now I know that cities and states like to, you know, have people bring their latest technology, and, and let's face it, fossil fuel is old technology, and they like to support people by buying their stuff. But the thing is, you could put more sweepers on the street and have them sweeping longer with just a simple broom handle and, 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 you know, a broom. And, and the streets will get cleaner because I see these guys go around with their leaf blowers and, you know, they, they aren't blowing anything away. The stuff's still there when they leave. And, and I, I just think they're an environmental hazard, they're noisy, we don't need them. And it's a lot cheaper to replace a broom than it is one of those expensive leaf blowers that runs on fossil fuel.
Thank you.
The last person who signed up is Lynn Marie Kreider.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler, members of the council. My name is Lynn Marie Kreider. I live in northeast Portland. I'm a lawyer retired from work in the public and private sectors. While I applaud and appreciate the work that the drafters of the policy have done to clarify the 2017 policy and appreciate the city treasurer's enumeration of the criteria used to select entities listed in Exhibit A, I testify to raise concerns about two aspects of the proposal. Number one, the choice not to incorporate into the policy the city's 2015 resolution forbidding investment in the world's largest fossil fuel-dependent corporations, and the choice to approve investment in a handful of massive corporations and to prohibit investment in all others without reference to any articulated guidelines for selecting entities in which the city may invest. I've submitted written testimony. I'll, I'll address only the first of my points here. In 2015, the city, along with the county, adopted a policy to divest from fossil fuels as part of the city's contribution to the urgent problem of global warming and climate change. The resolution stated that the city shall not directly invest additional assets in corporate debt securities issued by the companies on a list referenced there. I suggest that the policy, before you should be amended to include such language within the policy. Otherwise, what you have done is to adopt a policy that fails to identify the only criteria the council has actually adopted in the past. And I believe that, at the very least, the council owes the staff and its advisory bodies, as well as the citizens, some confidence that you continue to abide by the resolution that you adopted previously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Does that complete public testimony?
That's all who signed up, yes.
Could we have the treasurer and the chief financial officer come back? I'm sure there, there'll be some follow-up questions. So let me ask you this question. You know, and we've, we've had this conversation in private. If you stipulate general criteria, such as several people have suggested, then you raise the question of which companies. If you state the companies, I think we can acknowledge that for every company you name, I can find something reprehensible about it. How do you balance those two? Why did you choose to specifically choose company and not adopt, say, investment in a socially responsible bond fund that has established criteria? What was, how did you weigh those decisions?
So state law does not allow us to invest in funds. We're only allowed to invest in individual securities. So whether it is a list of securities that we're not allowed to buy, which is what we tried to do before, or a list now of the companies we are allowed to buy, at some point, the fiduciary decision is yours to approve that list. So the SRIC, when it was meeting, was tasked with coming up with recommendations. There was a reference to the time that was spent in city council meetings. I would suggest to you that the SRIC came up with recommendations, but at the end of the day, it's still your decision whether to adopt or not adopt those recommendations, so the time spent in front of you will still happen. So historically, the approach was a Do Not Buy list, which got controversial for various reasons. The, we've tried to take a more positive approach this time and say, these are the names, only the names, that the city treasurer will be allowed to consider and have it be framed in a more positive light. And if I could touch on a couple of comments that people made.
Sure.
The fossil fuel policy that the city and the county passed a couple of years ago somewhat simultaneously still exists. So that hasn't been abandoned. That still is in force. Secondly, there's value in diversification, and for that reason, along with the additional income, that's an underlying reason why we're proposing adding back corporate securities as an eligible investment. In prior years, when the federal government was dealing with a debt ceiling, and there were questions about whether or not even the federal government would make payment on its outstanding securities, we looked at ourselves and said, well, we know that the corporations will pay. So that, not that I think the federal government will ever not pay, but it is one of those things that's talked about when there are debt ceiling concerns, and there is value for diversification in the city's portfolio. And lastly, there was also a comment about paying rating agencies, that the companies that are using the rating agencies are the ones who are paying for the rating agencies' work. We're in a similar boat in that we pay Moss Adams to do the financial audit of the city, but we trust that they have integrity and that they are independent and that they are being hired to do a job, even if that information coming back to us is negative. So there, there's a broader question about the payment for outside services of all of these entities, and that, that there are other, there are other situations aside from just rating agencies where it is the company that is benefiting from the work that is paying for that work.
How often does the investment policy, or the investment policies of the city, how often does that come before the council?
Once a year annually.
Calendar year.
Dan, I presume this would be part of that public discussion?
That's correct. If adopted today, this list could be reviewed by council at least annually, or at your discretion, certainly. You would have the, the control to add and subtract names from that list.
Thank you. But so, just so I'm clear to Jennifer Cooperman, the fossil fuel screen that you alluded to has, has been applied by you and the city treasurer to reach these 12 securities?
Yes.
So this, we've gone from a Do Not Buy to a potentially Do Buy list. But you've applied the screen that we've adopted, the city and the county have, and so they, they would not be on the list if they, if, if they otherwise didn't meet that, that policy screen.
Correct, because the resolution that was passed, I think it was in 2015, I may have my years wrong, because that resolution is still in place, the one that disallowed further investment in the carbon tracker top 200.
And how did you determine that under this new investment strategy, we might have as much as $1,500,000 of additional income to invest?
Go ahead.
Yeah, that, that was really based upon looking at the current market, what's available out there. We have to recognize that even though a name may be on the list, securities may not be available to, for us to purchase. So we were looking at the active market today and what we might be able to purchase based upon the current market.
And there is a limitation in state law about, a 5% limitation per name. So the assumption was made that we take the current property tax money that is coming into the city and is waiting to be invested, that we, as quickly as we can, invest that money in what is, what corporate securities were allowed to purchase, and based on current interest rate spreads, the forecast was developed.
Commissioner Fritz.
Would there be any harm when we do this next year, either putting in the resolution, in the resolution or in the policy about the, we don't buy fossil fuels, we don't buy weapons, we don't buy other things? Since it's not...
We'd certainly be open to that, yes.
I would like to add cigarette and tobacco products as well, because that's not on the list. I mean, that's, none of these companies are involved in that either. But that's, that's, I think there's a way to both state our values in the policy and in the ordinance and still be clear and objective and transparent about what we are giving you the authorities to buy, but not actually not telling you to buy any of these. Thank you.
Any further questions? Very good. I'd like to call the roll on 1263, please.
Udaly.
So this is the adoption of the city of Portland investment policy?
No, yeah, that's correct. 1263.
Well, first I want to thank the SRIC for their hard work on this issue. I wasn't here when this committee formed. I only got to engage with them for a few months before council's action last year. I agree that the decision to dissolve the committee and the controversy around their work was disappointing, and it doesn't really serve to inspire community members to get involved with the city when they don't feel that their hard work is being valued or respected. I am somewhat heartened to see that none of the companies on their Do Not Buy list made it through our new proposed screening criteria. At least there's a final fitting tribute in there for SRIC. I want to thank the mayor and the mayor's staff, the treasurer and the CFO for their work on this new investment policy. It's a significant improvement over our past policies as well as what had been proposed last year. Our decision not to invest in corporate securities last year was actually one of my favorite moments at city council. It was what I imagine council could or should be like. I think that, well, I can't speak for all of us, but I imagine at least a few of us walked into that room thinking we were pretty clear on how we were going to be voting. But after listening to public testimony, and it was a lot more testimony than this, and deliberation, we came up with an unexpected solution, which is to simply not invest in corporate securities. That is what I strongly prefer we continue to do because our investable universe, which I love that term, by the way, thank you, still includes many bad actors and few truly ethical corporations. I understand the financial benefits involved in this item. It's a significant amount of money, up to $1.5 million a year. And while a small, small percentage of our overall budget, it's substantial and shouldn't be dismissed, this, or taken lightly, however, I have concerns about profiting through relationships with corporations whose values are not in line with our own. What's missing from this calculation is the cost... What's missing from this calculation is the cost of what these companies do to our workers, to our economy, and to the environment. These are called externalities, as the mayor shared with me yesterday, although I am familiar with that phrase. I'm more inclined to call them collateral damage, although I think that term might be too generous, because it suggests that those harmed are unintended targets, and these companies know full well the damage that they're wreaking on our, on our workers and on our environment. So, to sum it all up, until our allowable corporate securities issuer list is solely comprised of ethical, environmentally conscious corporations that treat their workers fairly, I cannot support moving forward with this plan. I vote no.
Fritz.
Thank you, Jennifer Cooperman, Bridgette O'Callaghan, for your work on this. Thank you to the Socially Responsible Investment Committee and for all the members of the community who spoke today, for all your work. We all care about this. And we come from, we are operating in a place of huge privilege, having a billion and a half dollars to invest, and a responsibility to make interest so that we can serve more Portlanders. And that's, I was disappointed that we didn't get to the mayor's proposal last year of using a socially responsible investment company, who we wouldn't know how they were making their decisions, but we would be confident that they were looking at all of the criteria. And that plan was rejected by the council because of the lack of transparency. So what we have here is a very transparent list of companies, which probably every single one of them has been found to do practices which don't align with our values. But as I said, we don't have the, we shouldn't use our privilege to make, make a, a stand that may, in the abstract, or even in the long term, provide some satisfaction to those who are wanting to call out particular companies, to call out particular practices. We are responsible for bringing Portlanders together and providing city services. And to have another $1 million to do that is a lot of people kept in housing or gotten into housing. It's a lot of people provided with the city services that they need desperately. And that is, is very persuasive to me. That is the most important thing to me, is providing services to the people of Portland. So I do hope that when we do this next year, that we will have more language that speaks to Portland's values, and that there will, obviously, there'll be continued review of these companies. And there is a financial investment committee within the city that looks at, should we buy any of these? And that's how I believe we should be making this decision. We should be bringing Portlanders together and providing the services that they need. Aye.
Fish.
Well, this has been a good hearing, and I appreciate that both the CFO and the city treasurer have made clear to us that, that we have a fiduciary duty to set the city's investment policy. After listening to testimony and reviewing the materials that our very capable professionals working for the city have given us, I'm inclined to give you both the benefit of the doubt in terms of the policy change that you're proposing. Here are a couple of factors in my, in my thinking. First, I like this idea of moving from a do not buy to a universe of potentially do buy. Although I, when I say do buy, I'm not talking about a foreign country. I'm, I'm talking about a do buy list. I think, I think it, it in some ways simplifies our task, and it gives us a chance annually to revisit the question. And it certainly does not preclude us from incorporating a set of additional screens in any resolution that comes before us annually. Number two is, I'm persuaded that this is a very conservative set of investment criteria, which will protect the city's assets. And I appreciate the mayor, a former state treasurer, engaging in a colloquy with our professional team about the difference between purchasing a bond or a security, a, a, a stock, and the different risks. So it, I think, is an appropriately conservative set of investment criteria. I like the fact that it provides some liquidity to meet the city's cash needs. And if anyone who was here for yesterday's work session, whether there's a recession in a year, year and a half, or not, we have some very compelling needs in our community for which we don't have the resources to fund at this point. And I also like the idea of being able to generate a market rate of return for a limited number of investment options. So as I consider all the factors that, that we've discussed at this, I think, very informative hearing, again, I'm persuaded to give the CFO and the city treasurer the benefit of the doubt. If, if we don't have the right mix, then in future years, we can revisit this question. But I think this is a, this is a, I think this is a policy change which has a lot of solid thinking behind it, and I'm prepared to accept your guidance. Aye.
Saltzman.
Well, my, my preference would still be to stay where we were, where we arrived at last year, which was to not invest in, in corporate, corporate bonds. But I do think that there's been a lot of homework done. And I also see that, you know, there is a, the returns that we can be obtained by doing this is important for meeting other city, city goals. And I think you've, the CFO and the treasurer have done a lot of good work here in coming up with a finite list of, of corporate bonds that we would, would purchase. So I'm going to support this. But, you know, my, my, one of my, my main concern why we did that amendment last year was that, you know, I don't want to see the council spending inordinate amount of time debating the pros and cons of a given corporation. We have, I, you know, I have full respect for the, the corporate divestment groups and activists, a lot of respect for them. But I also think that this, this council can't become judge and jury for corporations one at a time. It's just, it's too time-consuming, and it's peripheral to what we're here to do. But I am going to support these changes, and we'll see what happens. Aye.
Wheeler.
I want to thank the treasurer, and I want to thank the chief financial officer for working for the better part of a year on this policy, evaluating different ideas, different proposals, looking at different jurisdictional options, and settling on, on what I think is actually ultimately a conservative and fiscally responsible approach to the city that also encompasses what I believe are socially responsible standards for investing. This will evolve with time. As was mentioned during testimony, this comes back to the council on a regular basis, or as frequently as we want it to come back to the council. There was some good testimony about adopting previously existing responsibility standards. I think that'll be a live conversation over the course of the next year and beyond. And, but as far as I'm concerned, this is a significant step in the right direction from where we were before. And I appreciate your hard work. I vote aye, the resolution's adopted. Please call the roll on 1262.
You, Daly.
I just want to reiterate my appreciation for the SRIC and all the individuals that served on that committee. While I wish that we were keeping the committee intact, we have now replaced the committee with a different vetting process, making the committee somewhat unnecessary or redundant. So I regretfully vote yes.
Fritz.
Thank you very much to everyone on the committee, and everybody who put such a lot of passion into this issue. It's obviously a very important one to all of us. We now have replaced the balancing with a list, and I think it's important not to ask community members to participate with unrealistic, unrealistic expectations. And we did have such a lot of discussion at the council about the committee's recommendation, and ultimately, the council didn't go in the direction the committee wanted, that I'm, I, I think it would be better use of community members' time to do what 350 PDX did in bringing us a specific policy on fossil fuels. There may be others that we could adopt as resolutions, which would then carry forward into coming up with a list for future councils. And so I encourage community members to do that. Aye.
Fish.
Yeah, I want to join with my colleagues in thanking the members of the, of the committee for their service. And I take to heart one of the criticisms we heard in the testimony about sort of asking a group of citizens to take on a task and then yanking the rug out from under them. And we have to make sure that we don't make a habit of doing that. But based on the action we've taken on the prior matter, it does seem that this is the appropriate course of action. Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The resolution is adopted. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Next item, 1264.
Authorize the Water Bureau's preferred alternatives to plant capacity, location, and filtration technology for the Bull Run filtration project.
Commissioner Fritz.
And now for something completely different. The city has been instructed to build a filtration plant due to the detection of cryptosporidium by the federal government. There's been a lot of work to research what type of plant should be appropriate, asking the question, should, where, how big should it be, where should it be, and what type of filtration system should we have? Commissioner Fish, as commissioner in charge at the time, led this work to answer these questions, and I greatly appreciate his leadership. The mayor appointed me as the commissioner of charge of the Water Bureau in September. It's been a fascinating three months. Thank you to everybody who's guided and informed me. And one of the first things we did was to arrange a public forum to give the community an opportunity to review the options and weigh in on recommendations. Thank you for everybody who participated, some of whom are here today. After receiving feedback and questions, the recommended alternatives to plant capacity, location, and filtration technology are ready to be presented. Here is deputy director Gabriel Solma, chief engineer, Teresa, chief, chief engineer Teresa Elliott is available to answer any questions if anybody has any, and project manager David Peters.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. We'll try to be brief. We know you have a busy schedule today, so we'll go through these slides. I will just remind you that we had a work session on a number of these same issues in August. So this may look a little familiar to you, but we have been the beneficiaries of a great deal of, of public outreach and information sharing, and, and work done since then. So we wanted to bring you up to date with where we are now.
Thank you, Commissioner, and Mr. Mayor, and the members of the council. My name is David Peters, principal engineer with the Water Bureau, project manager for the Bull Run filtration projects. And I'll run through a handful of slides to identify what we're doing today, and a little bit of background and, and history on getting to the point we are today. So we're asking the city council to authorize the Water Bureau's recommended alternatives for the filtration capacity, location, and technology of these facilities. Little bit of history, the, why do we need, on why we need filtration. Back in 2006, the EPA developed a rule called the Long Term Two Enhanced Surface Water Treatment Rule, which we know as the LT2 Rule. And that regulation was to protect us from a microdermal organism called cryptosporidium. That's a microorganism that's resistant to chlorine, and therefore, in Portland, we had to do some additional treatment, or find some additional methods to protect us from this microorganism. We developed a, a unique program between 2009, 2011, where we asked for a variance. Our watershed is so clean and has so little cryptosporidium that we were able to show the Oregon Health Authority that the incidence was very small, and we were able to obtain a variance from having to do any further treatment. And we operated under that variance for five years. And then in 2017, we had some low-level detections of cryptosporidium. We were no longer able to meet the requirements of that variance, and the OHA revoked that variance. As we talked with city council at that time about the, the options for treatment for cryptosporidium, the choice was made to go with filtration. Filtration provides us other benefits besides just making the water safer by removing cryptosporidium. It will make our system more reliable. So when we have turbidity events during the winter, when the water gets dirty from storms, we'll be able to continue to operate during that time. In the past, we've had to shut down our system and run groundwater during those periods. This filtration would allow us to get back to the Bull Run system more quickly after an incident such as a fire in the watershed, because we would be able to treat that water after that event. And then we may reduce the amount of chlorine that's needed, and that would have an effect of also reducing the disinfection byproducts in our water system. And filtration also helps us to respond to any future regulations that we're not aware of at this point in time. It's just a more flexible system to, to address those as they may come up. So when we were here in August, we, we talked a bit about our online surveys and some of our stakeholder interviews. Since that point in time, we've done some additional work with the community and continued the conversation. On November 8th, we had a community forum, which was hosted by Commissioner Fritz. And I had the opportunity to speak at that event, and we had a really nice turnout on a Thursday evening, where we were competing with the Timbers game. We had over 30 people come out to hear about our project.
Just to clarify, we got done just before the beginning of the Timbers game. I don't want people to think we have the wrong priorities.
Right. So we were able to meet everyone's needs that evening. And that we had the opportunity that evening to, to meet with several members, several water users, and several members of the community out by the site that we're choosing. After that event, we've had continuing conversations with the neighbors around this recommended site, and we, we continue to have outreach with that group also. A number of them are, are here today and will be presenting also. So we came in August, we talked about these four foundational elements that we've been working on over the past year. Procurement method was the first one, where we were deciding how to hire a contractor to build these facilities. And in August, the city council authorized us to go with an alternative procurement, to hire a construction manager, general contractor. So that, that decision was made at that point in time. So we're here today to talk about the, the remaining three elements, which were the filter plant capacity, the location, and the technology. And I'll run through each of those in more detail. So in regards to filtration plant capacity, we looked at a range of alternatives for this facility. On the upper end of the range, we looked at two, a facility that would treat 200 million gallons a day. And we looked at that number because that's the maximum capacity that our current pipelines would be able to transmit by gravity into town. But what we found is that the future demands are much smaller than that. We don't anticipate over the next 30 years that we would ever see anything that large. So we don't want to build a facility that would be too big and would be sitting idle a lot of the time. So we looked, on the low end, we looked at a, a range that would be like a typical day during the summer, 115 million gallons a day. But what we found, if we went that small, is that when flows got higher than that during the summer, which happens fairly frequently, we would find that we would need to use more groundwater, which wasn't necessarily a positive option for us. So what we found through this evaluation is that a range of about 145 million gallons a day to 160 million gallons a day would meet our demands through a summer, a hot summer, in, in the future. And our planning goes out for about the next 30 years or so to, to identify that. So our, our recommendation is for a treatment plant size that would be in that range of 145 to 160 million gallons a day. The final determination would be based on the, the final design conditions of, of the site and piping as we go forward. But what that capacity allows us to do is to continue to use the Bull Run supply as our primary water supply. We would meet demands in, on most days and most years as we go into the future. We would continue to use groundwater.
Could, could you clarify that? So what happens on a day when it doesn't meet demand? What does that mean?
So that would mean that we, there may still be periods in time where we would use our groundwater system. It would still be our backup supply.
So it doesn't mean we're, we're not supplying water, it just means from the Bull Run system. You'll go to the ground wells.
Right. Our intent would be to continue to use groundwater in a similar manner as we have in the past.
Very good. Thank you.
And hopefully, less frequently during the winter. The, going with this size would help us to manage the cost, because this would build a facility that would match our projected demands in the future. And as we go forward... And as we go forward, this would, we would still keep in mind what our future beyond that thirty years might look like. So if we had to expand, we could. In terms of the filtration plant location, we looked at six sites as part of this detailed analysis. Sites have been looked at a number of years, over the decades, as we've thought about storage and treatment. So the six sites we looked at in detail for the study began at Headworks, up in our watershed, twenty-five miles east of town, and kind of followed the conduit routes down all the way into town to Palbutte. We looked at a number of parameters that were, we looked at a number of parameters in making this determination. And two of them kind of stood out in terms of why a site would not work. The first one, HDL, means hydraulic grade line, and that's the elevation of the site. And you'll notice in that first column under HDL that there are four that are highlighted in red. The first two, Headworks, Larson's Ranch, those two sit too high. So to get water to those sites, we'd have to pump all the water from our Headworks into the facility, and then from there it could run by gravity. But we'd have to pump everything. Roslin Lake at the bottom, it is too low. So that means we could get water to the site by gravity, but then we'd have to pump everything out. Palbutte is part red, part green, because we can get water by gravity to Palbutte, but we have several large customers upstream of that site, and we'd have to pump a lot of water back up to those customers. So there's kind of two that pass that elevation where we'd be able to continue to use gravity flow even through these treatment facilities, and that was Carpenter Lane and Lested Hill. The other key criteria is on the far right, labeled as schedule. And schedule was an indicator of issues that would take time for us to work through. And so for both Palbutte and Lested Hill, it was an indicator for land use. To, both of those sites had land use that would not allow building of a treatment facility as a primary use. And to get that changed would require significant time and effort to be able to meet. So it didn't meet from a schedule standpoint. So across the top, Carpenter Lane was our preferred choice primarily for those reasons. The Carpenter Lane site gives us a site that's at the right elevation, so it reduces the amount of pumping that would be required. The property is already owned by the Portland Water Bureau. We have about ninety-five acres at that location. The zoning allows for the placement of a utility on that site, so we should be able to obtain the appropriate land uses to build this facility. And the site is large enough to allow us to create some buffers between our facility and the neighbors in the vicinity out there.
What is the elevation of Carpenter Lane?
The site elevation, at the low point, it's about seven-ten. At the upper end, it's about seven-forty. In regards to the filtration technology, there are three filtration technologies that the EPA would approve in a situation like ours. Those are membranes, slow sand, and granular media. We did a thorough evaluation of a number of factors that would differentiate these for our system, including water quality, hydraulics, the regulatory environment, some comparative costs between the three, and comparison to other utilities. And what we found is that membranes would not be the best choice, because it's a high energy use. Even if you had the right elevation, the membranes doesn't, would not run by gravity, and you have to pump all the water through that membrane material. And so it has a high energy use, high capital and operating cost. We also found that in North America, there's only four facilities that are of a size that are similar to the size that we're talking about. With slow sand, the issue is that it has compared, comparatively of these three, it has the poorest water quality. And what we found is that it would also require a significant size, land size, and more than the land that we have available on our property. We also found that with slow sand filtration, there's only one facility that's over fifty million gallons a day in North America, and that's the largest facility in North America. So overall, the granular media provides us the best set of operating conditions that gives us the most flexibility for future conditions and will give us a good water quality. So the granular media filtration, just as a summary then, is a proven technology. It's used by many, many utilities throughout North America. It would be the lowest-cost technology of the three to implement on our system. It's very flexible and can be adapted to any future water quality conditions that we might experience, and it fits on the filtration plant site that we have proposed. Just the summary of our schedule. We are in a compliance order with Oregon Health Authority, which requires us to have the facility operating by September of two thousand and twenty-seven. We have been working in the pre-planning phase, and authorization to move forward with these recommendations today would complete our pre-planning phase, and we'll now be moving into the planning phase and put more details together about what this facility looked like and complete our pilot testing, which we have to complete for our next deadline with Oregon Health Authority of November in two thousand and twenty for submission of the pilot studies. So our next steps with City Council are that in summer of next year, we will be coming back, asking for you to authorize a design contract. We will shortly be putting out a request for proposals for the design firm for these facilities. And then later, towards the end of two thousand and nineteen, we'll be back asking for an authorization for the professional services contract for the construction manager, general contractor. So that's the conclusion of my presentation, if there's any questions.
So, I don't know if it was in there, but what is the estimated total cost for the granular media system?
So we're still using a range, and that we have not done any further evaluation of the cost. That will be part of our planning phase as we put the details together of the facility. The range that we've been using is the three hundred and fifty to five hundred million dollars.
And what would be the estimated incremental cost to go to the two hundred million gallons a day capacity?
I could find that out. I don't have that number on the top of my head.
I don't know. Yeah. It's probably a large number, I'm guessing, but just as you were talking earlier about the uncertainty of future rules from the Environmental Protection Agency or Oregon Health Authority, you know, some, part of me always says, you know, build the extra capacity, because you never know what's going to happen. And it's nice to have, it could be, nice to have that capacity to handle situations we may not even be thinking of now.
Yeah.
I was of that mind also. That was my question, and the answer is that if this is a modular system, we can add on to it later. So this will comply and put current ratepayers at about the right amount of money, or the tolerable burden, hopefully. And then we, future ratepayers can add on to it if necessary.
Okay. Thanks. Very good. Thank you. Excellent presentation, very thorough, very clear. Public testimony on this side, then, please, Carla.
We have seven people signed up. The first three are Dee White, Maggie, and Brent Leathers.
Thank you. Name it for the record, two minutes each, please.
I've got to wait on Carla, because I've got a graphic.
Oh, okay. Very good. Maggie, why don't you start, please? Go ahead. You can start. Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say that I think that clean, safe water from a protected source is a basic human right. And I think that everyone in the nation was appalled at what happened in Detroit. And children, the elderly, disabled families, I think, you know, every single human being deserves clean, safe water. So whatever we can do to do it right and to protect it and to go back and fix whatever was not right, or whatever, we should do it. That's it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thanks, Michelle. Did you want to go ahead, sir? Okay. Thank you.
My name is Brent Leathers, and I'm one of the adjacent property owners of the proposed facility. And right now, that area is a dead end, quiet lane. It's agricultural land. The ten or twelve of us that'll be directly affected by your plant are my age or older. We intend to retire there. Your proposed facility is a thirty or forty-acre industrial use in an agricultural area. You're about to change our neighborhood and impact our property values. We have a view of Mount Hood. Our property values might be halved from where they're at. For most of us, this is the primary amount of our estate, is what we have invested in our homes, and we enjoy it there now. To date, the Bureau, of course, can't tell us anything about what they'll block and how tall the building will be and what the industrial services are that will supply this plant on a daily basis, what kind of homeland security devices will be implemented to pollute our air and nighttime skies, or whatever that's going to look like. We have no idea. I don't think that the Bureau's done a thorough job of considering other options like utilizing existing facilities to split this plant up. They're looking at a single-size facility. There's a lot of things that I don't think you're looking at. Another one is the right-of-way that's going to be necessary to stretch these pipelines to the facility. I understand that the city's got a problem, and I am certainly very, you know, appreciative of that. You folks have just posed me with a problem. What you'll have to go through to get this approved is a conditional use process, and I don't mean this as a threat, but I'm in the position, I have to protect myself, and I will exhaust every legal means I can to block this facility until it's shown to me it won't impact us. Thank you.
Thank you. Dee, are you ready to go?
I'm coming.
All righty.
I had to rewrite it since you limited my testimony to two minutes. I'm Dee White. Despite assurance, can y'all hear me?
You do. Someone turn that off. Could you hit that gray button? Sorry.
Do what?
Hit the gray button.
Thank you, Dee. Your time is up.
My name is Dee White. Despite assurances from the Water Bureau's communications team, public involvement for a new filtration plant has been downplayed at best. According to the Water Bureau, seventeen hundred anonymous people answered an online survey about plans for filtration, and twenty stakeholders were interviewed. And yet, the city serves nearly one million water customers. This is a photo of the only so-called community forum. There were no more than a dozen members of the public present. The rest were Water Bureau staff, public utility board members, connected contractors. This is not even close to adequate. Public involvement for water customers will be footing the eventual billion-dollar bill for the next two decades. Because the devil is in the details, important technical memorandums describing the work are noted but not included in the resolution for public preview. Commissioner Fritz, yesterday you offered to share them with me only after I asked and just with me. This is not robust. This is not meaningful public engagement. This only perpetuates Portland Water Bureau's false narrative of a buy-in by the public. Pardon the French, but Portland water customers are getting screwed. Last year, as leader, Water Commissioner Fish rushed and confused the public, the pub, and even council colleagues. Filtration was sold for cryptosporidium, then quietly pivoted to different issues, a big one of which you have ignored for decades, proper corrosion control of lead in water system-wide. How often must we see? Come here begging for full disclosure, genuine transparency. In this case, the pretext was false, and the process for building cryptofiltration is broken. It's a betrayal of the public trust.
Carla, can we pull this? The camera back up.
Thank you.
The next three are Linda Leathers, Pat Meyer, and Doug Meyer.
I'm Linda Leathers, and I just wanted to support my husband, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Then the other last person is Nelson, I believe the last name is Dixon. Nelson?
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Pat Meyer. Doug Meyer, we are residents of Carpenter Lane. Didn't really expect that we would be speaking. I thought I was just signing a form, but I did want to reiterate what, and support what Brent had to say. As a long-term residence of Carpenter Lane, my husband's great-grandparents actually homesteaded the property there and owned all the property over where the water tower currently is and the property that the city of Portland bought. He'd be turning in his grave right now if he had any idea that that was going to be eventually the use of the property. We are concerned about our financial effect of it on our, what was to be our retirement. We are concerned about the activity there on the street for safety for our grandkids. We are concerned about the lack of knowledge and being able to tell us exactly what is going on. We are concerned for the residents that are all down Dodge Park, that it would only make sense that the incoming lines will affect their homes. And I do find it interesting that there has been public inquiry, but it all seems to be from Portland residents and not the people that are going to be affected by this. So I just wanted to kind of state that for the record, that these are people who have a rural lifestyle and will be immensely forever affected.
Thank you.
So she signed me up. Obviously, I wasn't prepared to say what I would have liked to have said. But as she mentioned, I grew up there. I was born and raised on that road. My grandfather built the house that I'm living in now. He farmed all that land where you're going to build, or wanting to propose to build the watershed. He's told me a lot of stories. He had a big collection of Indian artifacts that he farmed and got out of the land from there, and kind of concerned about that, you know? If that's a, if there was any Native American burial ground there, because he has, I have pictures and everything. I don't know if that matters. But obviously, just very concerned about what's going to happen to our neighborhood. Like, we've been hearing from the people that have spoken so far that we are very close-knit. We all say that we're going to stay there till, you know, we retire. And just concerned with what's going to happen. And just want to, I'm just personally wanting to be informed, and that's why I'm coming to meetings, to, you know, know what's going to happen to us. So, that's it.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thanks for coming in. Any further questions? Commissioner Fritz?
I just would say, colleagues, of course, we have been talking with the neighbors, and we'll continue to do so, and we're very mindful of the change in their environment. Since it is a ninety-acre site and the proposed facility would be maybe thirty-five acres, there's definitely an opportunity to decide it for the least impact on the neighbors, and we will certainly work with them to figure that out.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Udalee?
Aye.
Fritz?
Thank you for this presentation. Thank you again to Commissioner Fish for all of your foundational work on this project. Director Solma, Deputy Director Solma, David Peters, and Christine Nievesen, my staff. Aye.
Fish?
I want to thank Commissioner Fritz and her team and the Water Bureau for their excellent work in. work in engaging the broader community and then bringing the recommendations here today. Let's be clear, the three goals that are advanced by taking this action are, it allows us to anticipate, to meet current and anticipate future regulations. It allows our system to become more resilient, and we saw with the fires last year and the problems with ash, that that's real. And it ensures that we have safe and clean and reliable water for the next 100 years. Mayor and colleagues, I've been reflecting recently, partly because Commissioner Fritz and I were both on the K2 Newsmaker Show, and I've been reflecting on the kind of a tendency we have in our community to sort of see the compass half-full. And there's a lot, obviously, that's destabilizing in our community, and it starts with the actions of our president, then trickles down into our state, and then the growing pains we're going through as a city. And there's a lot that causes anxiety. I would like just to point out, though, that if you're thinking about comparable cities on the West Coast or even our peer cities nationally, we have so much to be grateful for. I did some traveling recently, and I was reminded once again that we have the best airport in the country. And it really makes a huge difference when you have an airport that is human-scale and treats the passenger the right way. We are taking steps to protect our beloved Bull Run watershed for the next 100 years. That's extraordinary action. And frankly, a lot of the editorial boards were skeptical that we'd actually get to this point, as I learned when I was running for reelection in the spring. We're about to take up a significant expansion of our transportation system through the Southwest Corridor, and we're doing planning that is going to have a significant impact on the look and the feel of our city for some time. We just passed the Metro Housing Bond, and we were told at the beginning of that exercise that it was a doomed exercise. We are, thanks to the generosity of Portland taxpayers, rebuilding our high schools and making sure that people like my son will have the opportunity to go to 21st century schools. We're working with the EPA to clean up the Portland Harbor. I could go on and on. These are not bets about today and tomorrow. These are about the long-term future of our city. And I think we should take a moment to celebrate the fact that even in these perilous political times, we can make 100-year bets on our future. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well said, Commissioner Fish. I wanted to thank the Water Bureau for the extensive work that's going to build this critically important facility. I hope, if Carpenter Lane does in fact end up being our site, I hope we can work out something with the neighbors to mitigate the impacts of the facility on their views and livelihoods and retirement. But this is a critically important decision for residents that, you know, outside of Portland, too. We have like a million customers, I think, something like that. And it's just vitally important. I mean, water supply is, you know, too often just taken for granted till you don't have it, and then all of a sudden, it's chaos, as we saw in Flint and other places. So we really value this resource we have in the Bull Run and our groundwater and the good stewardship provided by the Water Bureau and the city. Aye.
Wheeler?
Thank you for the excellent presentation today. I thought it was very straightforward. It was, I think, respectful and reflective of the work session that we held earlier. And the progress here is forward, and it's positive. I vote aye. Resolution's adopted. Next item is 1283.
1283, accept a grant in the amount of $824,831 from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Office for Victims of Crime, and appropriate $169,917 for the fiscal year 2018 law enforcement-based direct victim services and technical assistance program to support the Police Bureau integrated model of victim advocacy and trafficked individuals.
Colleagues, Portland Police Bureau Sex Trafficking Unit, otherwise known as STU, has for many years worked with trafficked victims who've endured years of physical abuse. This grant will fund three victim advocates that will operate a hybrid model of providing comprehensive victim services to both trafficked adults and minors, allowing for age-appropriate resources for each individual victim. This funding will also allow for the services to be offered to adult victims, whereas traditionally, there are very few services offered for victims over the age of 25. The Portland Police Bureau STU team recognizes that many of the victims they encounter are 26 years of age and above and have many of the same needs for victim services and case management as their younger victims do. By creating a cooperative model of collaborative response to the needs of trafficked victims, PPB will be able to create positive persecution, positive prosecution outcomes for victims. This is vital for the success of keeping victims engaged in needed services as they walk the journey of an often lengthy court process. Thank you both for being here today.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Brian Parman. I'm the commander at East Precinct where the Sex Trafficking Unit is housed. I think the mayor's done an excellent job summarizing the program and the benefit that this will bring. I think another point to take note of is that there is a half-time employee included in this request who will do research to really measure the effectiveness of these services that we provide over the next three years. At the end of the day, we believe this grant will provide a sustainable advocate system for these victims and get them plugged into the services that they desperately need. We're here and available if you have any questions.
Colleagues, any questions? Public testimony, Carla?
Yes, we have two people signed up.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Maggie and Robert Patterson.
I've read half the sky, I'm sure you all have, and it's got to be very apparent that women, girls, boys, who end up being trafficked are almost certainly in precarious positions as children and are exploited as children. Before they end up being genuinely trafficked, they're probably already in a precarious situation that we can never imagine, probably being abused. So let's think about those vulnerable children who are, I'm very aware that our foster system is really dysfunctional and broken. Let's talk about how, what happens before they get trafficked. They're in a precarious situation. What can we do to like prevent, you know, get the, stabilize children or young women or boys who are in precarious situations? What can we do? How can we intervene? You know, all the, being able to wash and dry their clothes, being able to get a meal, you know, being able to talk to peers, those kinds of things.
Thank you. Great points. Good morning.
Hi, how are you? I'm happy to hear about this grant money being available. You know, the worst thing about Portland is the traffic. And it's also important to recognize that Portland is a capital of sex tourism. It should come as no surprise to anybody here that many people come to Portland just to take advantage of the sex workers in this city. So as we move forward, I hope that the mayor and the commission will consider what we can do to make sex work safer, both for the tricks and the workers. That's all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
You, Daly?
Thank you for the presentation. It's particularly timely, considering we just saw a young woman with a developmental disability who was raped and exploited and trafficked and ultimately killed. One of her customers sentenced to 51 years. My hope is that she will receive clemency, but my greater hope is that we can avoid stories like Centonia Browns altogether. I vote aye.
Fritz?
Thank you for all your work on this. Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Yeah, thank you for your work, and it's good to, let's get to a sustainable advocacy system for survivors of trafficking and domestic violence. Aye.
Wheeler?
So this is probably one of the toughest duties in the Portland Police Bureau, and I want to thank Sergeant Georgiev, and I want to thank his unit for the work that they do. And I think we're all grateful that you're there, that you're doing this work, that you're advocating on behalf of sex trafficking victims. And I'm very proud to support this ordinance. Thank you. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next item, please, is 1284.
Accept a grant in the amount of $1.5 million and appropriate $1,065,483 for fiscal year 2018-19 from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance, National Sexual Assault Kit Initiative, fiscal year 2018, competitive grant to address the issue of unsubmitted sexual assault kits at the Portland Police Bureau.
Colleagues, this is the third Sexual Assault Kit Initiative, otherwise known as SAKI, grant awarded to the Portland Police Bureau Sex Crimes Unit since 2015. The SAKI 2018 grant will provide funds to retain an investigator in SCU, a Multnomah County Deputy District Attorney, and a forensics consultant, and continue the maintenance and expansion of the nationally-recognized sexual assault management system. We've had our fifth SAKI convention and continue to advocate for the victims of sexual assault with backlog kits. This grant is crucial to ensuring justice for sexual assault survivors. Through these funds, we're seeing better evidence collection, improved investigations, and a long-overdue survivor-centered approach. It's my understanding we have Detective Supervisor Molly Doll, I'm sorry, Molly Doll, here with us today, Sex Crimes Unit Coordinator Susan Lehman, and IT Supervisor Ed Arum. Welcome. And I'm not sure which order you're speaking in today, so just go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Molly Doll, the Sex Crimes Unit Supervisor, and Program Coordinator Susan Lehman, and Ed Arum, our IT Supervisor. And I think you summarized well how developed we are into this program and receiving these funds to sustain our investigative and advocacy program and bringing justice to overdue victims and its implementation.
Colleagues, any questions? Thanks for the important work. Public testimony, Carla?
Yes, we have two people signed up.
Very good.
Robert Patterson and Diana O'Gaz.
Come on up. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Hello, my name is Diana, and I just, I want to speak on the two item numbers that we are currently talking about, 1283 and 1284. And I am so, so thankful that these item numbers are being addressed. This is a very, very serious problem in our city. And I just, I thank the council for their support to continue to create advocacy, because advocacy really for survivors of sexual violence, there's not enough. And so to even have a part-time advocate, to do the proper research, is huge. So I just, I support these ideas. I thank the council for all the hard work that they are doing on behalf of the survivors of sexual violence and domestic violence and those who are trafficked. And in regards to this, I just thank you. I really, I want the best for this, and our Sex Crimes Unit work so, so hard. And I've gone through the process over the last year and have fallen through every loophole you could imagine of being a survivor of sexual violence. The sex kits, the kits that are, we're talking about, are so crucial. You can't file a sexual protective order if the crime doesn't happen within a 180 days. So a crime can occur through, like, one year, and if it's not within the 180 days, the survivor of that violence is unprotected in the city. And so to push the sex kits forward, to do the proper investigation, to bring the necessary closure and justice, is huge. So thank you so much.
And thank you for being here and giving your testimony. I think that clarifies, more than anything else anybody could have said, the importance of this. So thanks for taking the time to be here and share your story with us. It's an important one. Thank you. It's good to see you again.
Thank you. I'm Robert Patterson, by the way. It occurs to me that many of the victims of sexual assault come from some of our most marginalized communities: undocumented citizens, the queer and transgendered communities. And it also occurs to me that by ensuring that their assailants can be brought to justice, we also make these people less marginalized, more part of one Portland instead of two Portlands. Some of my best friends are sex workers, and I'm proud to have them as best friends. Unfortunately, right now, they perform their work in secret, in darkness, and that is a dangerous place. Portland should work to make sex work safer, and by doing so, it can provide a model for the rest of the nation.
Thank you. Thank you both. Please call the roll on the ordinance.
You, Daly?
Well, another timely topic. I think, as many in this room, I was shocked to hear about the backlog of rape kits. I'm a sexual assault survivor. I actually also trained to be a sexual rape victim's advocate through Multnomah County. There are inadequate supports at all levels. There are confusing laws around statute of limitations. As we have seen time and time again in the media, women are not taken seriously, rapists are not held accountable for their crimes, and the thought that we're not even processing kits in a timely manner is just further demoralization of victims. So I'm thankful for the progress that we've made in Portland and Multnomah County, and that hard work will continue, and hopefully, processing these kits will result in identifying and removing more predators from our community. I vote aye.
Fritz?
Thank you for your work. Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I'm really happy to see that we are getting the backlog reduced and we're getting additional resources to reduce the backlog of rape kits, because, I think, as Diana just articulated very well, it's bringing justice and closure for a lot of survivors. And it's really interesting to read the accounts, I think in the Oregonian, of the perpetrators that they're finding through these DNA work. And, you know, these perpetrators thought they would never be held accountable in an open, you know, in sometimes an open season on preying on women. So it's good to see these perpetrators ultimately being held accountable and serving time. Aye.
Wheeler?
I want to thank the Police Bureau and SCU for bringing this forward and finding this source of financial resources to make this possible, and I want to thank everybody who testified today. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Colleagues, just a time check, it is very nearly noon. We have, by my count, at least eight items left. So I'd encourage people, if they're making presentations, to provide the information that you think is most salient for the city council to know. Can you please read items 1285? is most salient for the City Council to know. Can you please read items 1285 and 1299 together?
1285, accept firm fixed price of $73 million from James W. Fowler Company for the design and construction of the Willamette River Crossing project.
Yes.
And 1299, authorize the Water Bureau to acquire certain permanent and temporary property rights necessary for construction of the Willamette River Crossing through the exercise of the city's eminent domain authority as a last resort.
Greetings.
Good morning. I'm Teresa Elliott, Portland Water Bureau Chief Engineer. With me is Tim Collins, the Project Manager for the project, and Lester Spitzer from Procurement. We are here to ask for two different, as you read, we are here to ask for two different council actions. One is for procurement's report to council, and the second is for authorization to proceed with doing property negotiations, and then if that fails, to go through the condemnation process. And as soon as Carla brings up the presentation, Tim will start, and we'll be as quick as we can.
Good morning, Council, ladies and gentlemen. I will make this as quickly as possible, since I understand we're under a time constraint. But so, the question of the day is why build a new water main underneath the Willamette River? So, here I've shown a chart that describes the interval of magnitude 9.0 subduction zone earthquakes in the recent past 8,000 years. I guess that's not so recent. And what I'd like to mention here is that the last big earthquake happened in 1700. We're 318 years from that time. The signs, best signs tell us that these earthquakes happen every 350 years or so, which puts us at a chance of 30 to 35% of having one of these earthquakes in the next 50 years. So, that makes it somewhat likely in our lifetime, and quite likely in the lifetimes of our grandchildren. The major thing that happens during a big subduction zone earthquake is that the loose soils near the banks of the Willamette River are very susceptible to liquefaction, and that means they will move into the Willamette River, and that will tear them apart. So, when that happens, the six crossings that we have that cross the Willamette River will most likely fail. We've done some recent studies, and they indicate that they will be damaged, and some of them will fail during a big subduction zone earthquake. So, with that happening, the likelihood of restoring water to the west side of Portland becomes quite problematic, and would be at least six to 12 months of outage, we estimate. That's very, not necessarily precise, but we believe that that would impact $1.6 to $3 billion of lost revenue in the, in those six months. There's three major hospitals that sit in this particular zone, and that would have a huge impact on how the city recovers if those places didn't have water. 31% of the city's employment is in this area, and this impact wouldn't just be for the six months. We know from New Orleans and other major outages that this impact continues for a much longer time than that, because the businesses leave the city. So, the project challenges of building a crossing is we have somewhat complex geology that's underneath the Willamette River. We have to get below the liquefiable soils, and that pushes us into a crossing that's almost a mile long. And most of the crossing cannot be accessed from the surface by normal trenching mechanisms. This type of construction requires a specialized equipment and expertise, and there's only a half dozen or so companies in the country that can do this type of trenchless technology at the diameter that we need to provide average daily demand to the west side of the city when an earthquake happens. And as you know, this is a highly urbanized area, so there's not a whole lot of open space. We have to work in constrained access. And then, although this limits the amount of easements, we still have some complex easement agreements to get accomplished. So, the proposed alignment begins on the west side, near the intersection of Harbor and Nato. It'll go underneath the River Place condos underneath the river, to the north of Omsi, and then coming out near the intersection of Seventh and Stevens. And then it'll come on the surface streets to hook to the west side connections after that. So, here's a basic schematic of the geology that we're going through. So, the gray is the fill that we need to avoid, and we'll go down quite a bit below the depth of the riverbank, and half of the construction will be this horizontal directional drilling. There'll be an intermediate shaft, and this will allow us to get under the obstructions such as the Markham Bridge Piers. And then on the east side, it will be a microtunneling construction. So, all of this thing is about a mile long from one end to the other. One of the advantages of this thing is that initial concepts, we're going to have to loft the pipe over quite a long stretch of neighborhoods, and we've been able to work with the design-build method to reduce the impacts to the neighborhoods. So, our thoughts on how this project will impact the neighborhoods has started very early. So, so far, we've had two project briefings, two open houses. We presented the project to the pub in November. We've discussed the fact that we're going to need an easement to the property owners. That's part of the eminent domain. And then, the design-build process will involve community-level interactions from the very start of the project and the design. As far as equity is concerned, we have 35% of the non-specialty subcontractors have been, per the contract, are going to be minority businesses, and that turns out to be about $13 million worth of work. We've been going on this for about 20 years, so we're working, it will be, today will be quite a good day if it happens, and we'll be moving on and making this a reality. So, we went through a two-stage process, RFQ and RFP. With the RFQ, we qualified three teams that could do this work. We received one proposal from the J.W. Fowler Company. Their cost was a little bit higher, well, their cost was higher than budgeted. So, when we came to council in 2015, we had a low confidence estimate of $40 million for the construction part of the work. The current proposal is 73 and a half million dollars to a total contract, a total project amount of $90 million. This, we will be able to adjust the five-year CIP so that this project will not impact the rates that the people pay for their water. Parts of the cost influences, construction inflation has been significant in the last three years. The steel tariffs have impacted the steel industry. Modified construction, which is largely related to the shaft, that shaft was not imagined early on, and is, to make the project work within the tight constraints that we put, they felt that that was the best way to minimize public impacts, and to increase the, or to decrease the risk of the project. And then, the market conditions related to the HDD contractors, they're related to the petroleum industry, which is also experiencing a lot of inflation in costs. So, the other part of this is we're doing easements, and there's going to be six easements. Three of them will be permanent, and three of them will be for the staging area, and there'll be some on the west side and some on the east side. And so, those will be, the other part of the request today is for eminent domain, so that we can get authority to do this work. The permanent easements will be at depth, and they won't impact the surface at all. So, the design is planned to be completed sometime about a year from now, with construction complete in October of 2021, and the project closeout of January 2022.
Thanks, Tim. Good morning, or good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners. I'm Lester Spetler, the Chief Procurement Officer. I'm going to deliver the CPO report, Chief Procurement Officer Report, that you're used to hearing, to supplement the presentation that Tim just did. So, you have before you the procurement report recommending a contract with James W. Fowler for the Willamette River Crossing Design-Build Project in the amount of $73,500,000. As Tim said, the engineer's estimate at the time that we solicited was $40 million. However, the confidence level on that estimate was low. On December 16, 2015, council approved ordinance number 187520, authorizing an exemption to the competitive low bid process, and authorizing procurement services to competitively solicit proposals for a design-build approach. As Tim said, we did a two-step process. So, the first step was to send out a request for qualifications. We received three responses. There was a committee that was representative of the project team, as well as one minority evaluator, and that team decided that all three responders were qualified. So, we sent the second step, request for proposals, to the three qualified firms. We sent that out to them in November of 2017 with a due date of March 1, 2018. As Tim said, we received one proposal. There was a committee that evaluated that proposal, that was representative of the project team, as well as two members of the Minority Evaluator Program. The evaluation committee determined that the proposal was acceptable, and procurement services issued notice of intent to award in May of 2018, and the project team proceeded with negotiations thereafter. The total estimated amount of the contract that is being recommended is $73,500,000. The city's standard disadvantaged minority women and emerging small business subcontractor and supplier plan was issued along with the RFP. The city established an aspirational goal for state-of-Oregon COVID-certified firms that range from 22% to 35% of the design and applicable non-specialty hard construction costs. James W. Fowler and their subcontractors at all tier levels have made a commitment of 35% utilization through subcontractors, material suppliers, manufacturers. 6% of that is for emerging small businesses. James W. Fowler is not a certified company. They are located in Dallas, Oregon. They have a current City of Portland Business Tax License, as well as they're in full compliance with the city's contract requirements. If the council has any questions, we're happy to answer those. If not, we're recommending that you approve the contract.
I have one question. On the estimate, and one obviously has to agree that the cost of construction has gone up precipitously in the last three years, so I get the difference between the 40 and the 73. My question is really with regard to the modified construction part of this. If you're saying about half of the $33 million increase has to do with the modified construction, you said that is to mitigate the impact on the neighborhood. Could you describe what that impact on the neighborhood would be, and what your thinking was with regard to why it was worth saving, or adding $16 million to the potential cost of this in order to mitigate the impact on the neighborhood? What does that mean exactly?
Okay, so, the largest piece of that was related to the slide I showed about the lofting of the pipe. So, the pipe, when in the HDD method, you want to install the pipe all at one time.
So, it's already connected?
It's all put together.
So, you basically have to thread it in like a straw?
Yes, yes, you do. And so, we don't have enough space, even with the modified method, to install all of it. But by putting the shaft in, it allowed, it allowed us to, in effect, run that extra length of pipe to a connection point underneath the shaft. And so, that greatly reduced the amount of pipe we had to put together on the surface, because we could use the microtunnel portion to string the pipe. And literally, it's like a storage place to put the pipe.
Okay, so, can I ask you sort of a dumb question, just because somebody will eventually ask me, they'll say, why is the city council paying, you know, effectively $16 million? Is this because the pipe would be going through people's yards? I mean, is that the deal?
Yes.
Would have to go over their houses, through their yards, through their driveways?
It's highly likely, yes. And it would impact traffic for much more.
It would literally be suspended over the air?
It would be suspended over the air.
For a mile?
It would be, yeah, for about a mile. And it would go basically all the way up into the Lads Edition, crossing MLK and the railroad tracks. And that's, all of those are things that, it made more sense to pay for an extra shaft and drop the pipe down in there as the storage, rather than having it go over.
Okay, you convinced me. Good, thank you. That's what I figured, but I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Any other questions? Public, oh, sorry, Commissioner Saltzman?
I think it's implicit in what you're saying, but this will be seismically resilient, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Any public testimony on the?
This is a report, Mayor?
It was an ordinance.
The second is an ordinance. So, is there any public testimony specific to 1299, which is authorizing the Water Bureau to acquire permanent and temporary property rights? So, this is the issue of eminent domain. Is there?
We had two people sign up for 1299. We have Maggie and Robert Patterson.
Hello.
Greetings.
I'm Robert Patterson. Access to clean water is obviously important, and I'm happy to hear that the mayor and the commission are considering this authorization. Since I've been homeless in Portland, one thing that I've learned is that it is hard to find a place to pee, and it's hard to find a place to take a shower. Since clean water is a public good, it shouldn't, pardon me, access to clean water shouldn't just be limited to those with homes. There need to be more facilities in this city for homeless people to pee, and for homeless people to take a shower. Homelessness should be a protected class. I'm Robert Patterson.
Thank you. That concludes public testimony. So, I'll do this. Item 1299 is the first reading of the non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. I'll entertain a motion on the report.
So moved.
We have a motion.
To accept it.
We have a motion to accept from Commissioner Fritz, a second from Commissioner Saltzman. Please call the roll.
Udaly?
Thank you for the report. Aye.
Fritz?
This is absolutely crucial, obviously. And Director Maxstra, thank you for being here today. Thank you for worrying about this for 20 years, and I'm hopeful that we can get it done in time. Aye.
Fish?
Excellent report. This has been on the Bureau's capital improvement plan for a long time, and pleased to see that we're moving forward. Aye.
Saltzman?
Good work. Aye.
Wheeler?
Very interesting report. I vote aye. Report's adopted. Item 1286.
Accept bid of Cedar Mill Construction Company, LLC, for the City Hall Restoration Project for $4,372,700.
Hi, Larry.
Good morning. Good morning, Bob. Good afternoon now. I'll try to make this as quick as we can go.
Thank you. I appreciate it, because we have another council session teed up after this.
You guys are really busy. That's not a great, not a great job up there.
Busy's good.
You have before you the procurement report recommending a contract award to Cedar Mill Construction for the City Hall Restoration Project, $4,372,000. I'm going to kind of skip some of the, notice of intent for this project was issued November 2, 2018. This report seeks approval of the contract award to Cedar Mill Construction. Unfortunately, it's 14% over the engineer's estimate. The Office of Management and Finance Facilities Division, along with procurement services, worked with Cedar Mill Construction, identified an aspirational goal for state-of-Oregon COVID-certified subcontractor supplier utilization of 20%, the hard constructions. Costs, there is a committed value of $1,182,819, or 27%, dedicated to achieve the city's overall aspirational goals as follows: DBE, $398,000; MBE, $220,000; ESB, $396,000. And a new category we're seeing a little more of, which I'm very happy with, is service-disabled veteran business enterprises of $168,156. Cedar Mill Construction is located in Tuolton, Oregon. They are not a state-certified COVID contractor. They do have a current City of Portland Business Tax Registration. They're in full compliance with the city's contracting requirements. If this council has any questions relative to the procurement aspect, I can answer those, or Randy Selig is here from Facilities Division, if you have questions about the project.
Any further questions? When will the project commence?
Randy Selig with OMF, Construction Project Manager. We're planning for the warm season, so May, June. It's an exterior project, so that's the intent.
Can't come soon enough. Good.
Good, excellent. I'll entertain a motion unless there's any further questions. Move the report.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Saltzman, a second from Commissioner Youdaly. Please call the roll.
You, Daly.
Thank you. Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye, thank you. The report's accepted. Item 1287, also a report.
Except...
Thank you, Randy.
Accept bid of Three Kings Environmental, Inc., for the St. John's Truck Strategy Phase Two project for $2,472,471.
Good morning again. Larry Pulat, Procurement Services. You have before you the procurement report recommending a contract award to Three Kings Environmental, St. John's Truck Strategy Phase Two, $2,472,470. July 18th, 2018, council approved the ordinance to solicit this project as a standard low bid. Project was advertised as the city's electronic procurement system. Notice of intent to award was issued November 9th, 2018. And this report seeks approval for Three Kings in the amount of $2,472,470, which is 40% under the engineer's estimate. There was a slight adjustment in scope, but it's still a very, very good deal. This project is a federally funded highway project, and as such, the city's standard goal of 20% COVID-certified firms for participation is not applicable. Federal projects recognize the DBE or disadvantaged business enterprise certification only. The Oregon Department of Transportation is the grantor and manager of the federal funds assigned to these types of projects, and for the DBE's goal granted by ODOT was only 2%. It's unfortunate PBOT's been working really hard to get higher goals, but sometimes ODOT's just not terribly cooperative. Under this one, Three Kings Environmental has committed to 4.89%, so they're over-doubled the actual goal. Three Kings Environmental is located Vancouver, Washington. They are not a New Oregon State certified COVID contractor. They do have a current City of Portland Business Tax license and registration. We're in full compliance with the city's contracting requirements. If the council has questions relative to the bidding process or the goals, I can answer those. There is, I do have somebody from PBOT in the audience if you have a project question.
Is Three Kings the general contractor for the truck strategy improvements?
Yes.
Okay.
Three Kings Environmental, they are the general contractor.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion. Move the report.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Saltzman, a second from Commissioner Youdaly. Please call the roll.
You, Daly.
Well, thank you for that. To date, the main concern with this project voiced by community members is centered around project delay. With the project now having gone through the bidding process and the current council action to enter into a contract with a low bidder, there are no foreseeable potential delays. The project is anticipated at this point to start construction in January. That's approximately six months later than originally anticipated, but I'm pleased we're finally on our way to getting this much-needed project done. Thank you again, and I vote aye.
Fritz.
Hooray. Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Yeah, it's great to see the actual construction getting going on the St. John's Truck Improvement Strategy. Thanks to Rich Newlin at PBOT for all his blood, sweat, and tears over this. Aye.
Wheeler.
Thanks, Larry. Thanks to PBOT. Thanks to Commissioner Youdaly. Aye. Report's adopted.
Not bad, six minutes.
Very well done. That may be a record for you. Next item, 1288, please.
Thank you very much.
Amend contract with Brookville Equipment Corporation and exercise an option to procure one additional streetcar vehicle.
Commissioner Youdaly.
Oh, sorry. Okay. 1288.
Eighty-eight, correct.
Thank you. My son's school is on lockout, so just getting an update on that. Everything's fine.
Sorry to hear that.
Sorry for my distraction. Okay. So, thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to introduce Kathryn Levine with PBOT. And I thought Dan Bauer... Oh, Dan, want to come on up? Okay. Executive Director of Portland Streetcar to present on the ordinance. Welcome.
Thank you. Today, we have an ordinance that would authorize a contract amendment, and it would allow us to add a third vehicle to our contract purchase arrangement with Brookville. Last spring, council authorized a contract with Brookville for the purchase of two cars. Additional streetcars are needed to support Portland's streetcar's strong ridership and increasing service frequency. Just little factoids, in April of this year, we had the highest ridership, weekday ridership ever. It exceeded 16,000 passengers a day. And from July to November of this year, streetcar ridership came in just under 2 million trips. We currently have a fleet of 17 vehicles, the oldest of which are 18 years old and will need to be taken out of service for refurbishment in the years to come. So having additional vehicles would allow us to do that and maintain service. It would also allow us to increase service in the future. We are anticipating funding from the House Bill 2017 Transit Dollars. We have local support for funding. It's my understanding the actual vote for that will be at the OTC in the spring. Thank you.
Pretty good. Any questions? Is there public testimony, Carla?
Yes, we have one person signed up. Robert Patterson.
Thank you. If you don't want to stay, you don't have to. Thank you, Cam.
How are you? Very welcome. My ex-Bray and I used to ride the streetcars because unlike the Max, there were no transit officers to check for tickets. We would do this in the mornings to stay warm, to try to dry off. This morning in Portland, there are thousands of homeless people looking for dry socks. It's shameful that in a city, in a region home to Nike, Adidas North America, Columbia...
Sir, this matter is an option to exercise, to purchase an additional streetcar vehicle. And that's the matter of course.
It's shameful. It is shameful that in a city that houses these apparel makers, we can't ensure that there are clean, dry socks for every homeless person every day that it rains. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, we all agree with you on that, but we're talking about something else. Thank you, though, Robert. We appreciate it. Please call the roll.
You, Daly.
Well, I am happy to support a growing streetcar fleet to meet the needs of Portlanders in and around the city. We're making a wise investment now to save money in the future. So thank you, Kathryn, and thank you, Dan, and thank you to the city of Tacoma for agreeing to work with us and delivering a better price due to the higher volume than we would have gotten on our own. I vote aye.
Fritz.
Thank you for your work. Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Well, it's great to see the growing ridership, streetcar, growing use, and want to thank Kathryn and Dan Bauer and the hard-working board of Portland Streetcar, Inc. for all the great work you're doing. Aye.
Wheeler.
This is great. Thank you. I vote aye. Ordinance is adopted. Next item, 1289.
Authorize intergovernmental agreement between the Bureau of Transportation and the Oregon Department of Transportation to allow city construction, operation, and maintenance of Southwest Bond Avenue under Markham Bridge and to reimburse state for associated services.
Commissioner Daly.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to introduce Steve, and this is a new one for me, Sigathie.
Very close. Sigathie, thank you.
Sigathie, from PBOT, to present on the ordinance. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you, Commissioner Youdaly, and good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'll try and keep this short. Steve Sigathie, Capital Program Manager at PBOT. The ordinance before you would authorize an intergovernmental agreement with ODOT, allowing the city to construct, operate, maintain, and allow public travel on Southwest Bond Avenue underneath the Markham Bridge, and to reimburse ODOT up to $30,000 in services they have provided and will provide, including review of design plans, issuance of permits, construction inspection, and overall coordination. Bond Avenue from River Parkway under the Markham Bridge down to Tillicum Crossing is catalyzing development of the OHSU Schnitzer Campus and will ultimately serve as a major north-south arterial street in South Waterfront along with Moody Avenue. We just finished up part one of the project, which is building the retaining walls and fill upon which Bond Avenue will be built. And now, for reasons that are probably obvious in this photo, coordination and agreement with ODOT is critical to constructing Bond Avenue under the busiest roadway on the West Coast. So finally, this is the area that this IGA is permitting, and with that, I'll take any questions.
Colleagues, any questions? Any public testimony on this item?
Yes, we have, Maggie may have left, but we have Robert Patterson.
On this subject.
If you don't mind, Commissioner.
My name's Robert Patterson. Commissioner, if you'd let me finish earlier, then you would have heard me explain that purchasing a streetcar makes sense. That's all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
You, Daly.
Well, I'm glad to see we're moving forward with projects that will support the development of OHSU Schnitzer Campus. This is an important step in building out the street grid in South Waterfront. Thank you for your work, Steve. I'll get your last name pronounced correctly. Although, can you pronounce my last name? No, I'm just kidding.
That's mean.
In sympathy or solidarity with difficult last names. I vote aye.
Fritz.
Doesn't matter how simple the names are, people still get them wrong. Thank you for your work. Aye.
Fish.
Yeah, thank you for your work, and thank you for the PowerPoint presentation because this is, obviously, the next big challenge is the middle section. I guess you would call that Phase Two, linking the built-up area of North McAdam through properties owned by Jay Zidell and then connecting with Schnitzer. So that's going to be a little more complicated, but glad that we're moving forward with this phase. Aye.
Saltzman.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. Thank you. The ordinance is adopted. Thanks for your good work. 1290, Commissioner Youdaly's pulling that back, but do you have to read it?
Yes, we should read the title. 1290, create a local improvement district to construct street, sidewalk, and stormwater improvements and construct a masked armed traffic signal at the Northeast 42nd Avenue and Columbia Boulevard intersection in the Northeast 46th Avenue and Saratoga Court Local Improvement District.
Very good. And that's being returned to Commissioner Youdaly's office?
It's being continued to January 9th at a scheduled 10:00 a.m. time certain.
10:00 a.m. time certain, January 9th?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Sorry for the confusion there. I did have that in my opening notes. 1291, please.
Vacate North Hunt Street east of North Argyle Way, subject to certain conditions and reservations.
Commissioner Youdaly.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Dee Walker, Right of Way Agent with PBOT, to present on the ordinance.
Oh, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Dee Walker, City, Portland, Right of Way Acquisition for Transportation. Thanks, Carla. Before you today is a city-initiated street vacation request from Prosper Portland for North Hunt Street east of North Argyle Way. As you can see on the map before you, so Prosper Portland owns property to the south of North Hunt Street with the exception of one small parcel that's owned by Transition Projects, TPI. And Ferguson Enterprises owns property to the north of North Hunt Street. They've already actually sold their underlying fee interest in the street since half the street will revert to the north property owner, to Ferguson. So they've sold their underlying fee interest to TPI in preparation for the project that TPI is going to be building, an affordable housing project. So Prosper will be selling their property to TPI. Most likely, it's anticipated in the springtime. I did reach out to Stephen Adcox, who's General Counsel for Ferguson Enterprises, and he's confirmed that they have no objections. Prosper, let me see, Kent Women's Village is currently located on Prosper Portland property. It was a temporary location only, and they knew that going into the agreement. It's being relocated just down the street at the, pretty much at the corner of North Columbia and North Argyle Way. It's actually BES-owned property, so it's a really good fit. There's major infrastructure over the BES parcel, so it's really, can't be used for commercial development. So that's where the Women's Village is going to be relocated. It's anticipated that it will be relocated by the end of the year. Catholic Charities is, actually has houses available for residents of the Women's Village for interim use to help out during the transition. There's been a lot of neighborhood involvement. TPI and the Low Income Single Adult Housing Organization has met with the Kent Neighborhood Association on five, on five separate occasions, presenting, discussing, and updating about the project. The Kent Neighborhood Association has given their letter of support, and it's also my understanding that there's a representative of the Neighborhood Association that's been attending weekly construction meetings, so they're really involved in what's going on with the project. As far as the street vacation goes, BES is requiring an easement for stormwater facilities, and you can see on the map in front of you right now, we're kind of holding this as a placeholder within North Hunt Street, but North Argyle Way is actually coming in for some street improvements. So depending on the timing of the street improvements for North Argyle and the development of the project for TPI, that easement possibly will be relocated outside of North Hunt onto North Argyle Way. And so we have made arrangements that we've already have BES's approval that it's okay to relocate that if it's determined that it can be moved. There are individuals here from the following organizations. If anybody has any questions, there is an individual from Prosper Portland, the Booking Group, who's a consultant for TBI, TPI, also the Executive Director of TPI, is here, Housing Development Center, Catholic Charities, and Joint Office of Homeless Services. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions? Public testimony?
They did sign up. Caitlin Burke, George Devendorf, and Deborah Kemper.
Great. Come on up.
I would just say, I believe I can speak for all of us in saying we're happy to answer any questions you may have, and we otherwise won't forget the time.
Good. Very good. Then this is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to all of our partners who are here in the room for your hard work on this. This is very well done. Thank you. So now we are going back to the items that were pulled from the consent agenda. There were two. The first of the two items was item number 1269.
1269, accept a grant in the amount of $400,000 and appropriate $171,836 for fiscal year 2018-19 from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance, fiscal year 2018, Intellectual Property Enforcement Program Competitive Grant to address intellectual property criminal enforcement in the Portland Metropolitan Region.
And Cheryl Webel is here.
She has just stepped out. My...
Carla, who pulled this?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lightning did.
He'll be right back.
He's gone.
He's not even here. Is there any other public testimony on this item?
Sergeant, one down is back.
We don't need a presentation.
Sergeant, I actually don't think we need a presentation. The individual who pulled it has left.
Very well, sir.
I'm sorry that you were here, and thank you for your patience. Please call the roll.
You, Daly.
Aye.
Fritz.
Thank you very much for being here for your patience. Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. And the other one that was pulled was 1274?
Yes. Amend Human Resources Administrative Rule 6.03, Vacation Accrals for Bureau of Emergency Communications Employees effective the beginning of the first full pay period of January 2019.
And I don't know who pulled this item.
HR to pull it because Exhibit A had a column that was...
HR had to pull it because Exhibit A had a column that was wrong.
Mr. Anthony, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
I just, if you had questions about...
Are you offering an amendment?
A substitute Exhibit A.
Do we have to vote on that, Carla?
Yes, we do, because it's a new exhibit. The by-pay period was incorrect.
So I move the substitute Exhibit A.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Fish, a second from Commissioner Fritz to move the substitute.
Could you just briefly explain what the difference is?
The difference was, as I came before you guys in July, I simply took those same by-pay period accruals and applied them to the Boeck structure, but Boeck accrues at a higher rate, so those by-pay period accruals were incorrect. So when the ordinance came out, some employees in BTS, EBS, who do the configurations, reached out to me and told me the appropriate accruals by pay period. So that's what the amendment was.
Thank you. And could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, I am Jamal Anthony with Labor Relations.
Thank you.
Very good. Please call the roll.
You, Daly.
Aye.
This is on the amendment, correct?
This is on the substitute.
The substitute. Okay, thank you. Fritz.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. And the substitute amendment, or the substitute ordinance is adopted. Thanks, Jamal. I appreciate it.
Daly.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. It's adopted. We are now adjourned. See you all at 2:00.
That's amazing we got you.[1727.62]